Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We can have roll call, please.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marquez.
Oh, she's online tonight, but she's not participating in, participating in the votes tonight because she is out sick. Si necesita traducción, por favor hable con Gonzalo que está sentado atrás. Y en Zoom, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete. Y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno. El signo de número para la, oh, help me, contraseña. Got it? Thank you. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance of the room and give it to Evelyn here next to Dr. Baker. Let's see, where'd I go? If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. Consent items are voted on simultaneously with one motion and are not debated or discussed by the board. The action indicated on each item is deemed to have been considered in full and action will be taken as worded in the item. If a board member or the superintendent so requests, any item can be moved in order, can be moved in order or removed entirely from the agenda. If you want to discuss an item, please let us know with a speaker's card before we change the agenda so that we can pull it from consent items for discussion. With that, oh, we're already on our board officer rotation. I was gonna take this, John, are you?
Go ahead.
Okay, so this meeting is our annual organizational meeting per board bylaw ninety-one hundred. At the annual organizational meeting, the Board of Education shall rotate so that each current and re-elected board member assumes the next higher position in the officer rotation order. Since we do not have any newly elected or appointed board members this year, we don't need to worry about the rest of the rotation rules. So with that said, will the board please stand for our annual rotation? You may have a seat, thank you. So with President, well, now former President Marquez was absent today. We are actually currently sitting in the seats we would rotate to. We would normally have a formal pick up our stuff and move some ceremony to it, but we are here. So now Dr. Baker is the Secretary of the Board. Cecilia Marquez will be sitting in seat five, the liaison to California School Boards Association and the San Mateo County School Boards Association. David Weekly is our representative to San Mateo County Committee on School District Organization. Alyssa McAvoy is clerk, Mike Wells, Vice President, and I will assume the position of President. And last time I sat in this seat, we had a pandemic and the whole sky turned orange one day. And a whole lot of weird stuff happened, so I'm gonna do my best to keep that out this year.
Twenty twenty, right?
That was twenty twenty, yes. Um, we, well, this is actually coming before approval of the agenda. We're actually gonna pull item four, four point one. So we'll go on to five point one, and I'm saying we're pulling four point one. We haven't approved the agenda yet. So Cecilia's not here, we'll recognize her at a future meeting when she's actually present. With that, are there any other changes? No changes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? The agenda?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oral communication, item seven, do we have any speakers cards?
No speakers cards.
Thank you. Item eight point one, discussion of district-wide solar phase two financial study and approval of final projects list.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Will.
So, um, we worked closely with our energy consultant to complete the deeper dive on the financial modeling requested at the last board meeting using the district's historical electrical power usage and bills. And the result, the total estimated project cost for district-wide phase two solar actually came in lower than the initial high, high level estimate. So the total estimated project cost landed at fifteen point two two six million. And I wanna note that the ITC direct payment reimbursement, investment tax credit, ITC, for clean energy projects is now available to be monetized for direct payment during year one of operation for tax-exempt entities through the Inflation Reduction Act. So if you proceeded with the project, you would be seeing that three point eight eight million as well as the first year savings to general fund of approximately three quarters of a million dollars returned in year one. Some questions that, that we received from board members. This project would be competitively bid out using an RFP and energy code. So it would be competed between different design build contractors. Reminder on the district's grandfathered PG&E rate, more financially beneficial rate. So you have a little over two years to complete the construction of the district-wide solar project. PG&E has already approved the grandfathered net energy metering to rate. And if the district does not complete construction of the, of the project within that approximate two and a half years, it, it's estimated at a forty percent less financial benefit to the district. So you're currently looking at approximately twenty-two point six million dollars saved over the twenty-five-year life of the system. And so if, if you didn't proceed and waited and were transferred to the new rate, your savings then would be approximately, and did proceed with a district-wide solar project in the future, the savings would be approximately thirteen point six million. And I wanted to know if anyone had any other questions or discussions for this item.
So I had a clarification question I had emailed earlier about whether or not batteries were included in this estimate. And my understanding is the answer is no, not, not in this build-out, but that we would be making sure to build it in a way where adding batteries later would be anticipated and therefore inexpensive and not require rework.
Yeah, that's a great question, David. So after you sent that, so the answer is no, battery storage was not included in this estimate. I had a long discussion after your email with our energy consultant. And for elementary and middle schools, batter, in terms of doing these calculations for payback, you know, where the system pays for itself, battery storage doesn't currently pencil out. It does, you, you can get to payback in high schools and, you know, other entities. But one thing that we could do is include battery storage as an alternate, as an add alternate in the RFP to see how pricing came in. They did say that to do the peak load shaving approach, there are two approaches to battery storage. You can either do the peak load shaving approach, or you can do the resiliency approach, which is kind of like an emergency backup alternate to a generator. And so if you, if we were to proceed with the peak load shaving, which doesn't seem to pencil out in terms of paying for itself, that would be approximately a quarter million to a half a million dollars per site, and we're looking at about eleven or twelve sites right now. If you went in the direction of resiliency, where you would try to set the battery storage up to fully power the school site in terms of, you know, PG&E power loss, you normally target about four hours because a standard PG&E power outage is about two to three. And so that usually is one to, or estimated at one to two million dollars per site. So it gets really expensive quickly, but we could definitely include that as an add alternate just to see how it comes in. You know, analyze it and discuss it. And as you, as I had mentioned in my response to your email, it would be, it, it is easy to add battery in the future and connect it to the system. So you have a few options here.
Thank you. It's like, I think many of us have got, you know, solar and batteries at home and the combination of being able to do load shifting, especially with an NEM two dot O plan, where you can really be, if anything, pushing back onto the grid or grid neutral during peak hours and then getting paid to push back and run the meter backward. I'd be interested to see how the math pencils out. So like, I think the, the option that you put out there to get that data as we bid out for solar is a good idea, making sure that the solar systems that we build out anticipate possible battery adding is a good idea. And thinking about how we have our schools be resilient in the face of increasing PG&E outages that we don't need to send our kids home, that we can keep them in class receiving instruction, even if PG&E is having a bad day. And based on what I've been seeing, I, I wouldn't anticipate that PG&E is now gonna be rock solid unlike in the past. And I wanna make sure our kids are insulated from that, where we can give them a good education. So I do wanna see how those bid out and, yeah, I thank you for your, your help penciling this out. I'm excited to bring green energy to, to the district. A lot of the investments that we make here are in the future, but in sort of an abstract sense and turning out well-educated students. This is a rare opportunity to make an investment in the district's future in a real material and financial way that also can benefit students. So I'm excited about, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just say, Will, thank you very much for answering all my questions that I sent you. I appreciate that. And I won't repeat everything you just said. I totally agree with you. I've been a longtime champion of all the solar and climate sort of resiliency things in our district. And then the other thing, just in case the audience doesn't know this, is that these utility savings will be general fund savings that can go back into education. So what's really nice about this is that it's, it's bond money, it's tax rebate money that's coming in to pay for it. And then we already see we're gonna get a return, but then that return money is going right into the general fund to help with salaries and educational programs for our kids. So it's, it's a pretty huge win-win. And then the only thing I would say, and I know that we'll be mindful of this, but, you know, one of my sort of questions or comments was, we need to make sure, and actually the timing should work well if we, you know, if assuming we give the approval tonight to sort of go ahead and start the process with the RFP and all of that. In the next several months, we'll be working on the Measure S activities, the bond activities, so we'll have a better sense of where we might be doing bigger changes at school sites, so new construction or that sort of thing. Because the one thing, of course, we don't wanna do is put solar someplace where then, you know, a couple of years later, we realize, oh, gosh, that's where we wanted to put a classroom. And I know we're smart enough to not do that, but I just wanna say it as an obvious thing that, that the timing actually works out nicely, right? Because I think our goal is in the next several months to have a priority list and understand what we're doing. So anyway, yeah, I'm excited about it, ready to vote yes when needed.
Yeah, I'll just add on to what you're saying. I'm not gonna repeat it. I, I agree with both of your comments. And I think that our capital projects should be geared towards climate resiliency and decarbonizing is clearly a pillar of, of climate resiliency. So I'm definitely gonna support this project moving forward.
The only thing I wanna add that I think wasn't said yet, just for the sake of the audience, both online and in this room, this project is exciting because it is a, it points to the success of our Measure T bond program. We're able to do this project because we were able to complete other projects on time or early and under budget. And we were able to free up money from those projects to go back to our bond fund. And so this is kind of a late, late decision that we have this money now. What, what more can we do with it? So it's exciting.
Well, and, you know, and then we're also under this time pressure of the two years, right? Because we wanna make sure we get everything online.
Yeah.
For that, yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you, Will.
All right, moving on to item nine, school and community reports.
All right, are we ready? I guess.
Before we get started on this, I said this at one of our last meetings, but this is a really happy coincidence, too. I went to McKinley and my son goes to Kennedy, so it's all in the family.
So I just wanna welcome, um, Aron Dath today. We're gonna start off with Kennedy and Ms. Chandra Leonardo is gonna, and her team will be presenting. Yes, you are just.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Chandra Leonardo, and I am joined this evening with Cynthia Cardona, Community School Coordinator, Assistant Principal, yes, we can go ahead and clap for it up. Kennedy Middle School Assistant Principal Jared Bosnic, and this is B. Williams, Assistant Principal. And as I mentioned, I am, yes, thank you, B. I am Chandra Leonardo. This is my first year as principal at Kennedy for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. So good evening, esteemed board members. We are glad to be here tonight to talk to you about all the great things happening at Kennedy this year. So one of the things that we did before we got started this year was really look at our panorama survey data from spring twenty twenty-three. And that kind of informed some moves that we wanted to make this year. And so one of the things that we noticed is that some of our students just didn't feel as connected to the school as we would hope that they would be, because we know when students are connected, then they wanna come to school. They feel motivated. They wanna learn. They wanna try their best. So as we went forward, one of the things we talked about at our staff meeting this year, we are one-to-one school. And one of the things that I wanna talk about is highlight new things at Kennedy. And one of the things we talked about was, we know we have Chromebooks, but we wanna see, how can we have more hands-on things at school and really get kids involved and talking and discussing? So as you know, Kennedy, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade comprehensive middle school, the great thing about Kennedy is that Kennedy looks like Redwood City. So you come to our campus, it looks like downtown Redwood City, and that's something that we're really proud of. And students, their families, they choose Kennedy because of all the things that we offer. We're a comprehensive middle school, so that means all of our students have a seven-period day. They are rotating through classes. And students come back, former Kennedy Cougars come back and tell us, it was a great experience for them because when they move on to Woodside, when they move on to Sequoia, et cetera, they feel greater prepared because Kennedy laid the foundation for them. So our whole goal at middle school is to just make sure that our students are better prepared for that next phase in their lives. So highlights at Kennedy, we, and like I mentioned, we have our core classes, of course, but we are a dual immersion school. We have Spanish immersion. We have Mandarin immersion. The great thing about our Mandarin immersion, we have our very first full graduating class this year. These students have come through Orion to Kennedy. One of the things we're working on is trying to figure out the pathways for, for high school. So that is an extreme highlight. Our Mandarin program also has a Mandarin elective, which is great. So students who are not in the Mandarin immersion program get to choose Mandarin as an elective. Our Spanish immersion program, we have two hundred sixteen students. We're a syllable by literacy, literacy school. So our students have the opportunity at the end of this school year, our eighth graders, they can test and get that syllable by literacy showcasing that they are proficient in Spanish and English, which is awesome and great. With Measure U funds, we're able to do wonderful things like in science, for example, science from scientists. Scientists come on Fridays for our seventh and eighth graders. Students get to dissect things. They get to learn. There's more hands-on projects, so that's great. Measure U also affords us the ability for our sixth graders to connect with MSI, canoe field trips, going to Soul South Park, doing analyzing water for the Bay Area watershed. So there's great things happening. Our teachers, one of our seventh grade teachers took to heart what we said back in August about really making sure our students are really having real-life experiences with content. So we know text analysis is a super important in middle school. So this teacher decided to have her students do a mock trial, Red Lamb to Slaughter by Roald Dahl, and students had to basically take a position and choose the best text to form their opinion, which is great. We also have one of our math teachers to have students analyze RCSD water bills and then formulate linear equations. So I really don't wanna talk too much about it, but our academics at Kennedy, we're on fire. We're doing great. And so there's lots of good things happening at Kennedy. I really invite board members to come to Kennedy and see what's happening. The other thing to highlight really, our elective program. Students love to choose their electives. Our music program is great. Our music teacher does a fantastic job of trying to make sure our students showcase their talents. He's there on Thursday mornings. We have a jazz band. We have our students perform downtown Redwood City at the Veterans Day Parade. I was there last Friday. They performed at Hillsdale Mall. They're performing again at Stanford this weekend. So really, our goal this year is to make sure that the community gets to see all the good things that are happening. One of the things that we've been doing this year as well is updating Facebook, so Facebook folks get to see what's going on. I have community members that reach out, hey, how can I help out at Kennedy? What supports do you need? And so that part is really, really great this year at Kennedy. For school events, so one of the things like I mentioned about our panorama survey and students not really feel as connected to the school as possible is B. Jared Santin and I really sat down and took this to heart and figured, okay, how can we make sure that our students are connected? And we'll have a, talk a little bit about more of this with the student voice, but we have a lot of events happening at Kennedy. This week is Inclusive Schools Week, and we were going around making a school-wide video, so I've gone up to students interviewing them, and I asked a student today, well, what about Kennedy do you like? What makes you feel included? There's so much going on here. There's something for everybody, and I enjoy that. And that is true. There's lots of things happening. Beginning of the year, we start off in August with Vang. We started off, we have our Cougar Leaders, and, and you'll hear from some of our Cougar Leaders shortly. But in August, we had Cougar Leaders, our eighth graders mentoring our sixth graders. We try to have an event once a month. We had sixth-grade orientation. In August, we had back to school, I'm sorry, a sixth-grade social. We had a taco truck. Families came out, learned about Yosemite, Grand Canyon, eighth-grade events, all those things. So we're trying to make sure that our families are also coming back on campus. And something that I try to explain to families is, we need you. We know that your middle school students are gonna say, no, mom, no, dad, no, grandma, don't come here. But I'm trying to, no, we need you because we know that the greatest, one of the greatest indicators of student success is when the families are getting involved. So our goal this year is to really figure out, and Cynthia will highlight this in the parent portion, the parent outreach, is how important it is for our parents to stay connected at our school. So, and I was gonna say in August, but Halloween was in October. We had two hundred seventy-five students at our dance. Our PTO was very involved. They decorated. Students had a lot of fun. November was World Kindness Day. We had a Ruby Bridges Day, so there's all kinds of events happening. And Jared, I'm gonna let you talk about Cougar Leaders. What, what do you wanna say about Cougar Leaders?
We actually have some Cougar Leaders here today.
And actually, I should say, it's Campus, the beautification day is what I really want you to talk about.
So we want to embody what it means to be a community school. We have the great opportunity to collaborate with some local community members who attend New Beginnings Community Church, which is actually across the street and a block away. They reached out and they asked, how can we serve? What can we do to help Kennedy? And so we met, we made a plan, we put something on the calendar, and they came out on a weekend and cleaned classrooms, cleaned hallways, lunch tables, redid our garden area. They did some landscaping, even painted some carts for our library. It was a fantastic day of community, of connecting, and so we really wanna embody what that means to be a community school, and we hope to do future projects like this again.
Thank you. Jared was also in charge this year along with Cynthia with our high school fair, so this was a local thing. So all schools were able to come to our gym and learn more about local high schools, so that was great as well. As I mentioned in the first slide about all the different electives, electives also kind of ties into the different clubs that we have. We have over twenty-six clubs and B's experience is in high school, and so I want B to come and talk about the club rush that she initiated this year and what that looks like at Kennedy.
Um, so we had a club rush. I was excited to bring this in. We had about, about thirteen and fifteen of our clubs at lunchtime showcasing what their club is, advertising pretty much. So Susan, go sign up. We had music playing and we tried to have a mascot. That didn't happen, but it'll happen again in the spring because we're gonna do another one in the spring. But kids were able just to come up, and I always told them, you're like a free agent. You can go choose what club you want to. If you don't like that club, go to another one. So it's just to get the students more connected. We know what happened, you know, is coming back from the pandemic and getting those kids reconnected because the more they're connected, the better they do academically, the better they feel engaged in school. So we're pretty excited about our club rush.
And so our clubs, and we'll, again, student voice, we'll talk about this. Our clubs are a good thing at Kennedy because our clubs are all started by our students. We'll talk about that a little later. Something else that we brought in September was Latsini next to Hispanic Heritage Month. That was a great thing. Students still talk about it. We had a Selena movie watching party. We had the, ate tamales, had Concha's chips and salsa, music playing on Fridays. A student told me, wow, I really feel like you recognize my culture. I said, I'm, we're trying our best. And so that had students, I had students email me, well, I speak Arabic and April is Arabic-American Heritage Month. Are we gonna celebrate that? I said, yes, we're gonna do it. So it's opening opportunities for students to reach out and discuss what they wanna see. And every year, we also have the Scholastic Book Fair, so that's not new, but it's really important. Our PTO helps out with that. We try to recognize students. I do every day in the morning announcements, birthdays. They also get a monthly birthday cupcake. We send out birthday cards signed by admin. We had a local gentleman come and set up at our library, John F. Kennedy Memorial, so our social studies class got to go in and learn from him. We had Red Ribbon Week, Anti-Bullying Week, all kinds of things. And then our eighth graders in October also went to Yosemite. Our seventh graders will go to Grand Canyon in May. So for student voice, I believe I do have two students here. Oh, there's one student. I do have two students. So these are our two Cougar Leaders, yes. So I've got Kosi here. Kosi's in eighth grader. Ariel as well. They have been at Kennedy since sixth grade. And as our Cougar Leaders, they do an amazing job trying to get our sixth graders connected. So Kosi, I'll let you take the floor. You can go ahead and talk first. You go first, and then Ariel can go next.
Okay, hello, I'm Kosi, and I'm talking about the intramurals and the goal-setting conferences. And for the intramurals, we had that in sixth and seventh grade. A teacher did that, and I feel like everyone really enjoyed it. It was like, we did one sport like every month or so, and we, like, every lunchtime, people would make teams, you'd go and play. And then eighth grade, that teacher left. He moved to Sacramento. And everyone in eighth grade thought that intramurals was over, and a lot of people were sad about it, like, myself was sad, but a lot of people wanted it back. And so people would talk to, like, Ms. Leonardo, for example, and, like, ask for it back, and they ended up getting a new teacher, Mr. Jordan, and he made the intramurals, and that's been very fun. And so the goal-setting conferences, that was very fun. I myself enjoyed it. I thought that we learned, I learned a lot about, like, like, showing my own classes and, like, seeing how I did on them myself. Like, I feel like with normal conferences, your teacher just talks about you. You don't get to show your side of the story. And I feel like I learned, like, a lot about, like, what I did good, what I did bad, and, like, say, math, for example, what I need to work on myself. And I feel like that might have prepared me more for semester two with all my work, and I feel like that might have made me a better student myself. And yeah.
All right, this is Ariel. Ariel, what about you?
Okay, I'm a Cougar Leader, and I love, I love being a Cougar Leader. Being a Cougar Leader to me is very special because I get to connect with the younger kids in sixth grade and eighth grade mentors. When I was in sixth grade, they were very unorganized and didn't look very excited to be there. And they were very scary coming into middle school. And I wanted to change that, so I love hanging out with my sixth-grade group, and I think we have a lot of fun. Having a voice in mentoring is basically all student-led from choosing activities and snacks, and that's why I was so excited to be a mentor. And student of the month is one of, one of the special things at Kennedy that happen every month. And I think kids feel more appreciated and motivated to be positive and participate more in class, even though not everyone gets it. I think it's very special to other students.
So with student of the month, we made changes this year because of student voice. So we had students last year that would say, oh, my goodness, the same people get student of the month. What are we gonna do to change this? So now we don't have as many students of the month, but teachers are now focusing on our PBIS, our traits. And so we also, we had an ice cream truck in September. Ice cream truck came again in October for our students of the month. We have donuts, so they get a treat with it. But our students of the month did change because of our student voice. Something else, I think on the other side, I might have missed it, but we have a student store at Kennedy, and our students actively email me. I'll send out surveys. What do you wanna see in the student store? And they tell me, we put it in there. They use their Cougar Cash to purchase items. One of the things the students told me last month, the line was all the way down the blacktop. This is worse than Black Friday. This is crazy. And so I posted pictures and shared. There's just so much, and they ask for the student store every day. And thankfully, this year, we have parents that are supporting because by ourselves, it's a lot. But we've got great parents that are supporting this, this year. But we've got great parents that are supporting this year and have great ideas for that. So that's super exciting. The other thing that I like, I try my best to do is to send surveys by Google Forms to students. How are you liking this? What's going on? This week for Inclusive Schools Week, we're doing student shout-outs. So students, or inclusive shout-outs, so students can shout out a teacher or they can shout out a friend, a peer, showing who's inclusive. So students do enjoy doing that as well. We also have Lunch Bunch. Students who might not want to be out in the crowds all the time can go to a quiet classroom with our mental health counselors and do different things during lunchtime. Something else that we had in November, we had an art contest for World Kindness Day. And some of the artwork that you see on our slides are created by students. And so now we're printing those posters. Those are hanging up around our campus. California Junior Scholarship Federation is new this year. Something I heard from students last year was, I get good grades. I feel like I never get recognized. I just feel like I don't ever get recognized. So one of the things I created or started this year was California Junior Scholarship Federation. I should say, I didn't create it, but we have a chapter at Kennedy. So students are applying for that. I think I missed it on the other side, but the other way that we recognize students is with our Honor Breakfast. So last week, I know Ms. Dr. Baker was there, Trustee Wells, Liz Wolf was there. So we had over 500 students and their families in our gym. IHOP helped us out and provided pancakes, sausage, eggs. And we recognized students for their achievements for honor roll. We added attendance and iReady this year as well. So we plan to do that for trimester two. So really for me, I know, I remember what it was like to be a middle school student. I also know that these are very important years in a student's life. So I really try my best and I think we try our best to make sure that we engage with our students on a daily basis. I have students that have emailed me saying, Mrs. Leonardo, with, under you, communication at this school has never been better. And I always think to myself, sometimes like, man, I don't remember always going up and talking, engaging with my principal or assistant principal this way, but Kennedy students, I do feel that they feel okay coming to us about anything, whether it's by email. I've had students write me notes. Ms. Williams, the same. We have students that have come to us. So that's super important. Our intramurals, our student spirit days, these are all because of our students and what they want. And we really want to make sure that Kennedy is a place where students feel like they belong. And now I'll have Cynthia, our community school coordinator, talk about the different ways that we're trying to engage parents at Kennedy.
Good evening. It's good to see you all again. Field of Dreams, there's a quote that says, if you build it, they will come. I think if we build it, provide food, they will come. And so that's something that we try to add into our events, right? School Site Council, PTO, Principal's Coffee. We heard from parents that coming early in the morning, sometimes that's not, that's not always easy. And so we are now promoting once a trimester, an evening, an evening meeting where they get to come. And we've had workshops there, teachers come and support with workshops. And yes, food, pizza and pupusas with the principal. So I want to highlight some things. I know, you know, we continue to do Cougar Connect, May's Day, workshops that parents ask us for, and food distribution, attendance meetings, partnerships with different organizations. We have our PTO president here, shout out to Jess, who's been amazing collaborating with us. We also have AP here, our school site director for the Boys and Girls Club. And I want to highlight them because really a lot of these events and they've taken the parent voice into consideration, the Boys and Girls Club, they changed their schedule because of what parents needed. And Jess has been amazing at communicating with parents. But I want to take some time just highlighting new things that we're doing at Kennedy. When I first came into Kennedy just a few months ago, I started attending these events and meetings and I got to hear from parents. And yes, they were receiving the newsletter. Yes, they, you know, got emails and things like that. But what about our parents that don't know how to read? And what about parents that really they only know how to click one app? Or they want to be involved in school? So coming together, we started different things like with a cell phone that the district provided to the family center. We downloaded WhatsApp and we created a Spanish group chat for parents who want to receive information in Spanish. And we're sending them information there. We're sending them links. Maybe it's easier for them just to click through, through that chat. And they will respond and they're, you know, asking us for updates. And so it's been really cool to text them through there. We've also started a, and we had the school website that we created with Mr. Jay so that it's easier for parents to access, access information about shadow, how to shadow high schools and how to go to their information nights. We also have our Family Challenges, which have been so fun. Let me, I want to talk about the monthly podcast first. So for parents who want to know more information, what's happening and maybe don't know how to read, once a month, Catherine, our mental health counselor and I, are doing podcasts where we will talk about what we did the month before and we'll introduce the things that are to come that month. We have sometimes had a special guest. So if any of you want to be on our podcast, please let me know. And so then parents get to hear about that. We will also talk about our Family Challenges, I think has been my favorite thing that we've been doing this year. So once a month, we are challenging families to do things at home. We want to recognize the importance of having conversations at home. And some of the things that we heard from parents was like, how do I talk to my kid about this topic? How do I sit down and talk to him about what's happening? And so we want to provide opportunities for them to have conversations with their kids. So we've had challenges like pick a spot in your house that you can cling together or go out on a walk and have a conversation together. This month's challenge is to have a game night. And so we ask them to send us pictures through our WhatsApp or texts or they can email Kennedy FC. And they will send us pictures, tell us stories about what they're doing. And then we have a monthly winner. We will have a student that wins and they'll win a prize. And the prize is always something that they get to go home and do with their family again. So whether it's go to movie tickets, so going to the movies, or this month, we're paying for dinner for the whole family to go out. And so, yeah, it's been really special. And I just want to thank you all one more time for coming to the Honors Breakfast. I think that is exactly what all of these things are leading to. I was standing, sharing, passing out T-shirts and I turned around and I saw parents, I get out of their seat and come help, pass out certificates. And that's exactly the type of community that we want. We want parents to not see Kennedy as one team and they're another team at home. But when they see that there's a need where they get up, get out of their seat and step into what we're doing at Kennedy. And I think that's what the Cougar community is all about. Thank you.
So, yeah. I'm sure there are many things I probably missed saying tonight. But at this point, we're done with all of our slides. So I'd like to know from board members, trustees, et cetera, if there's any questions, comments, concerns? The floor is open.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
It's clearly delivered with love and enthusiasm. Awesome to have the students come here as well. We would honestly love to have more students at these board meetings because we're here for you. We're here to support you in your journey. So it's just wonderful to be able to hear directly from, from the students. There were a couple of things in the presentation that like, I wasn't quite sure, like, and some of this is that I'm the newest trustee up here. So I don't know what I'm talking about. Like you mentioned with pride that you're a one-to-one school and I have no idea what that means. And maybe you could explain that?
I can. So all of our students have a Chromebook. They get to take it home back and forth to, to and from school. So this was started, I believe, four or five years ago. I don't have the exact date, but our students do get to take the Chromebook home. That was mainly because at that point, we adopted digital curriculum and we wanted our students to be able to access this at home.
Got it. And have you had to offer extra support to parents to be able to connect to the internet at home?
Yes. And so that's one of the things that Cynthia and I are working on as well because parents do want to know, how do I access Power School? What does it look like for Google Classroom? So we do have them come to the family center. But starting in January, we're actually going to have specific days on Fridays where parents can come in for that specific support. But right now, they do email or call or text. And then we do kind of one-off things, but we really want to have actual focus things. Okay, this week, we're talking about Power School. Come in for Power School. We're doing Google Classroom where here's how you email your child's teachers. Here's what you can do. So all those things, or here's how you can access things on your student's Chromebook. So that's, that's our next step for January.
Awesome. Thanks. I love just seeing the progress and next step is going to be January. There was another program that's mentioned, Connect with MSI, maybe a...
Yes. So MSI is Marine Science Institute. Yes. And so through Measure U, we were able to, we have, I can't say it's a grant, but we're able to pay for them to bring their employees to, their scientists basically to our school site, sixth grade. And so they provide our students with lessons. And so then our sixth graders go to the bay here and they canoe. So they have canoe field trips and then they also, yeah, Jared did go. And then we also have walking field trips as well. They go to Solseth Park. So that's through MSI, Marine Science Institute.
Got it. That's wonderful. Thank you so much for explaining that.
You're welcome.
I really love the component of doing the parent outreach via WhatsApp. I've been trying to get the district to adopt that more broadly. Because I think a lot of the parents in our community are there on WhatsApp and aren't nearly as consistently present in other media. It feels like Kennedy kind of has this figured out and it makes me really happy to hear that because I feel like at many of the other school sites, I've been like, you need to use WhatsApp to communicate with the parents. And like, I don't feel like the message has resonated as well. So I don't know if there's more...
Talk about it tomorrow. It's part of our meeting.
Boom.
But there are more schools that are using it than you think.
Yes.
I'm very happy to learn that. Yeah. Because I want to make sure we're connecting with our parents and WhatsApp's clearly the way to do that.
It is. A lot of our families do use WhatsApp. So again, so I'm really thankful that Cynthia brought that idea to us. And so it's been working out very well for us.
Awesome. Let's execute on that district-wide now. In terms of the podcast, very happy to be on that. So like,
Okay.
Tell me who you, you want me to go and talk with?
Sounds good.
And then just like one quick comment on the deck, the QR code for mental health was blocked by...
Who was it?
That was relayed on it. I was not able to scan it.
Yeah. So Cynthia does have a physical one with her tonight, but we have passed those out to our students so they can scan or parents as well. It's just a bookmark. And so students can be able to self-refer or parents can refer students for any mental health or safety net services. And that's something I probably missed on the student voice part. But one of the things we were really trying to get students to do is to advocate for themselves. So if they feel the need to check in with a mental health counselor, that they can do that on their own. The same thing. And so when I do my morning announcements and I send out emails to students, I try my best to include a link there. The same thing with our incident report. So we have an incident report where students can report anonymously or by name. And so our thing is if you see something, say something. And so students do report things and we try our best to tackle that as soon as possible, same day. I had a student that filled out that incident report and I was on it like three minutes and I went to the class. I was like, oh, whoa. He's like, you really do check that, huh? I was like, yes, I do. So, yeah, so that's, I'm sorry the bookmark didn't work, but it's there. And we really do hope and are happy that our students and our families do use that.
That is awesome.
Oh, yes, clever. So that was the other thing. So because we are one-to-one, students have their Chromebook on clever when they log in, the single sign-on, there's links there where students can click for the incident report. They can click for mental health check-in or safety net services. So that's all there for them to do.
That's, that's fantastic. And last, just as a personal comment, both of my sons are currently at Orion in the Mandarin Immersion Program. And one of the reasons why we were so excited to have them in the public schools here in Redwood City was not just that the MI program is there at Orion, but the district had been thoughtful enough to continue that program all the way through and have the Mandarin Immersion strand at Kennedy. So my boys may be showing up on your doorstep in a few years.
Sound good.
Very excited at the school. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Go down the row. Thank you so much. That was such an engaging presentation. I loved having all of you here. Thank you to the students. We love having students here and you guys were awesome. And thank you to our parent leader, Jess, and Boys and Girls Club and Community School Coordinator, Assistant Principal's principal. I don't know if we have any teachers in the audience. I gotta put on my glasses and then I can see more clearly. Hello.
There's teachers online too.
Okay, great, great. Well, thank you to all of you. I mean, you guys are doing a fabulous, fabulous job. I know when I came on the board 16 years ago, for the first many years, I mean, we had a lot of conversations about Kennedy and wanting to have more hands-on science, you know, real world sorts of things. And it's really come into fruition the last few years and certainly under your leadership even more so. So thank you so much. I mean, it's really exciting. We were just, many of us at the California School Boards Association Conference last week and the final general session speaker was a man named, just looked up his name, Mark. What was his name? Oh, Mark Perna. And he was talking to us about Gen Z, which is 11 to 26-year-olds, but I would basically say it's our middle schoolers. And one of the things they talked about is that unlike our generation, where maybe if you just said, hey, you need to do this assignment, go do it. They're actually not apt to do it unless they understand the why. And they have to believe in the why and they have to be passionate about it. And once they're passionate about it, they are going to dig deep and go hard. And so it's pretty clear from everything you said tonight, I mean, that is one of the overlying goals, right? Is why do you need to learn the math? Well, let me show you. We can do utility bills, you know, science, why, you know, why do you need that? And so you're really just sort of embracing a lot of the principles that this gentleman was encouraging us to really take back to our school districts and really have those conversations with students, have, you know, listen to student voice and all of that. And you're clearly doing that. So thank you. I did have one question on the WhatsApp. You said the Spanish-speaking families. Are we also doing WhatsApp for English or are we relying on other methods?
So for, we don't have any English for WhatsApp. So for our English-speaking families, we'll have the Cougar Connect. I send out Blackboard messages, but we knew that with our Spanish-speaking population, a lot of them do use WhatsApp to connect with families outside of the country. So that was something that they use more frequently. It's a lot more easier for them to use.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then just real quick, you know, I love hearing about all the clubs and just the student-driven activities. It's so clear that middle schoolers, they have so much leadership potential. We want to tap into that. So the more opportunities there are, the better. So anyway, there's so much more I could say, but I just loved the whole presentation and all that you're doing. So I got to get out there soon.
Yes. We can't wait to see you.
And I'd love to be on the podcast. Cynthia, are you the one who does that? Yeah, that'd be fun. Okay.
All right, let me start with the Cougar Leaders. Kosi and Ariel, thanks for coming down and talking today about intramurals, the goal-setting conferences, being a mentor and, you know, the Student of the Month. It was great to hear about your experiences and sort of, and also I loved how you, Kosi, how you advocated to get intramurals back and make sure that that continued into eighth grade. So thanks so much for coming down. And then Chandra, Be, Jared and Cynthia, thanks for presenting tonight about Kennedy. It was an honor to be at the Honor Breakfast last week. But it was, I mean, I was going to mention this in my board report, but it was packed. I mean, with families and students and there was such a happy buzz of energy. And this was at 7:30 in the morning. School bell doesn't even ring until 8:30. It was, it was incredible. There was smoke in the room from the pancakes being grilled outside. It was just, there was a lot. It was really, it was, it was, yeah. No, this was.
It was nice.
Because it used to be like 30 kids at a restaurant and now looking at me...
No, yeah. Yeah, it was, no.
For going to a couple of smaller ones, I'm like, there has to be more honor students than 30 kids.
No, I also want to say that I love that you're expanding the inclusiveness of the recognition there and for Student of the Month. I think that's really important. Students do want to be recognized for the work that they're doing. And they're not all starting from the same place. And so they have different sets of like accomplishments. And we should be celebrating all of the accomplishments. And I think that really came through when you said your goal is to engage with students every day. And, you know, we could see that engagement at the Honor Breakfast. It was, it was awesome. And I think, I might have heard this wrong, I think I heard you say that the iReady recognition will be about growth in the next one.
That's correct. So we didn't have enough time for the first trimester to look at growth, but really for second trimester, we want to look at ours diagnostic from diagnostic one and two and measure, look at the actual growth would be ideal.
Yeah, that's great. That's, we want to celebrate their growth to get that in there. So that was, that was, that was a lot of fun. I also want to call out that it's great to hear the impact that Measure U is having and how Community Supporter Parcel Tax can bring such positive benefits to the school. You called it out several times in the presentation where Measure U is specifically funding things. And so I want to thank the Redwood City community, of course, for supporting that parcel tax and supporting our schools. And that way, that's really good to see. Lots of good stuff, a lot of excitement. Thanks for presenting.
Thank you.
Cecilia, did you want to, did you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Welcome everyone and thank you for the presentation, Kennedy. I do want to say thank you, of course, to the two students of smoke tonight. I'd like to point out, you're really brave to come in and speak to the board. Not everybody does that. So hats off to you guys and continue to do what you're doing. Obviously, I had three kids that went through Kennedy and I couldn't say how great of a school it is. We all know. I mean, we do have all other great schools too. Just like Janet said, I do have a special, certain schools have a special place in our hearts, but we all care for all of them. So I do want to appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Chandra, thank you for your leadership and of course, as well as the Vice Principal and Cynthia, every teacher that's there. They do matter. They do make a big difference. And again, we're getting kids ready for high school and beyond. So thank you so much for all that you guys do. And again, we're getting kids ready for high school and beyond. So thank you so much for all that you guys do.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Kosi and Ariel, um, I just wanna say I'm so proud of you for coming and speaking to us. Um, and like Cecilia said, you're really, really brave. I know that we have adults and teachers and principals, they're adults too. They, they come to us and they're nervous speaking to us. So, um, I'm, I'm really proud of you and it was really great to hear your voice. And it is very, um, meaningful and impactful to hear your experience. So thank you so much for that. I, um, appreciate you also advocating for, um, intramurals. I hear a lot about intramurals at, at my house. I understand football just ended. Um, there is a great team that won, I hear. Um, and, um, gosh, I, you guys are doing a phenomenal job, all of you. Um, you're a great team. Um, Chandra, I'm so happy that you took this position. I know there was some hesitation there for a while. Um, but you were just phenomenal. Let's see. I don't, I don't need to repeat. Everything's been said. I don't wanna go negative, but I have to say this, there is this longstanding narrative about Kennedy in the community. I love that you're getting out there to change that because even just a couple of years ago, we had a parent come to our meeting and in public say, I would never send my kid to school with those kids.
I remember that.
And then.
And at the time, there were three.
Then we met. I think Mike said, well, as a Kennedy parent, and then Cecilia said, well, as a Kennedy parent. And then I said, well, as a Kennedy parent. So, um, I, I love that you're getting out, um, into the community and showing everybody what Kennedy really is. Uh, this narrative goes back to even before my time. I went to McKinley and nobody wanted to go to Kennedy then. That was the bad school. And we need to get rid of that narrative. Kennedy is amazing, doing fantastic stuff. You're do, doing so much. And the fact that the students email you blows my mind. Like when I was in middle school, I wouldn't, I hardly even knew who my principal was. We didn't have email at the time, but I wouldn't have emailed them for sure. So the fact that they're comfortable with you just, um, sending those quick notes, I think is amazing. So, um, fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks.
So it's my turn. I wanna say, um, you know, kudos to all of you, the students, what wonderful job you're doing. But I'm going to really thank someone, um, very special, who did take time and made me really nervous whether they were gonna take the position or not.
It's like, oh, you're talking about me?
Wendy kept saying, get on it, get on it. Uh, you know, come on, you haven't even flown the position yet and it's June. I go, oh, give me time, give me time, give her time, give her time. Chandra, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Um, B, you've come along with a great personality. Kids love you, parents love you. Jared, we, he came from Jefferson Elementary School District, where, you know, my buddy Bernie, but he retired, uh, and said, he'll do well, he will do well. Just keep on, make sure that he's kept very close to the principal for a bit and then he can take off. And he, and he is, he's doing well. And Cynthia, thank you for all that you do, for all that you do. And the teachers that are out in the audience and the PTA president, thank you. Chandra, what you have done with the communication piece, because I think I've told you this several times and aft, and during Friday, not Friday, the, the day that we went for the breakfast, was it, was it Friday? It was Wednesday, wasn't it? Wednesday. There was a parent that came, well, let me, let me back up. When I drove in, I, I thought, well, I'll just park in the back lot, you know? I drove and there was a line already. It, it started at the door of the gym. It came out and then it kinda circled in the playground, then it went back out on the sidewalk and around the corner. So I, I parked in the front lot and then walked in with a couple of parents. I was like, oh my gosh. And then I saw parents who I had known from their elementary school days. And they were in line as we were talking and, and conversing about how their year was because they had just started at Kennedy. And these were, um, a couple of Mandarin immersion parents that were there and then a couple of the, uh, dual immersion parents that were there. And also some Orion parents and some Henry Ford parents. And the positive impact that all of you are doing, teachers, parents, is amazing. One of the parents that, uh, their student was getting an award took me, cause we were all asked to come up and give out certificates, which was great. And you just put us to work. That's all, that's all I said. Just put us to work, whatever you want us to. But took me aside and said, I cannot believe the amount of energy that goes into making a student spill spats, feel special at this school. You have got to commend each of those site administrators, the teachers and those parents that are there on a regular basis to work with my kid. And so thank you so much for all that you're doing, all of you, the teachers, parents, you know, we couldn't do it without you. And for getting out there and getting that communication, that's one big piece that I hear over and over about you is the communication piece. It doesn't end just with, you know, your newsletter that you're graciously put out there every week and I get to read it and many of us do also here. Um, but the, the other communication pieces that go out on a regular basis, you know, you're on top of that. And so I know it takes up a lot of time and I have somebody that gets to help me with mine, but you are the one that's doing it. Along with the pieces that you gather from your colleagues. Um, but what a great job, a really good job. So my hats off to each and every one of you. Thank you so much for everything you're doing for the Kennedy community. I wanna say, keep it up. And you know, we have to go after a, we have to go after a ribbon. You know, we're gonna have to go after a ribbon, Chandra, B.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're gonna have to go after a ribbon, you know, and all right, and we, and we'll get it and we'll have more to help us, but we're gonna go after a ribbon.
Well, thank you.
That's right. You are certainly right. You're certainly right.
Just to follow up, I wanna thank all the, um, your staff that are online right now too.
Oh, yeah.
You do have staff in the audience right now.
Perfect. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
So now we're gonna have our MIT McKinley team show and Mrs. Anna Hernandez lead.
Yeah, yes. President Lawson, Vice President Wells, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Baker, Executive Cabinet and Community Members. Good evening, everyone. My name is Isela Sedano and I am in charge of writing and reading the announcements every morning at McKinley Institute of Technology. Along with another student, Maria Orejel, who primarily speaks Spanish. We are part of a club called Linkrue, who gave us the opportunity to be part of many activities on campus that benefit our community. We are here tonight to share all the wonderful things that are happening at our school. With us tonight is Miss Susana Garcia Fernandez, our school principal, who will start showcasing how MIT is developing students as empowered learners. Following her presentation, Mr. David Hicks, our assistant principal, will explain the events that have taken place so far and that will happen later this year. To continue, Ms. Kathleen Murphy, our MTSS, TOSA and Diana Mora, President of the Eighth Grade Student Site Council, will address how MIT is not only elevating the students' voices, but empowering us to become leaders that can make informed decisions affecting the governance of our school. Finally, Ms. Jackie Campos, Community School Coordinator, will present how McKinley is addressing the parent outreach at the family center and the school. We hope you enjoy the presentation. Go Bulldogs.
Members of the board, Dr. Baker, uh, President, uh, Lawson and Vice President Wells, uh, thank you so much, Isela, for the introduction. Uh, every morning we hear her voice and, uh, Christina. And, um, it was amazing the day that she came to me and said, because I asked her to read the announcements and of course she said right away, yes. And one day she came and said, Mrs. Anna, can I write the announcements? And I'm like, of course. Um, so we created some systems for her to receive every announcement that the teachers want to share with the school, the students, the shout-outs, uh, all the information, the sports, and she puts it all together at night. And she puts it, she sends it to me every night and we read it together and I print it and then she reads it. So if you wanna hear the announcements from eight to eight oh one, you can come to school and listen to them. So, um, I wanna start before I forget, because then I will. Um, I wanna thank, uh, not only the teachers that are here, thank you so much, and the staff members. Uh, we have counselors, the director of the, uh, after-school program, and I know that there are students and families and teachers online as well. So thank you so much for ev, to everybody for being with us tonight. You're, without you, we couldn't do it. So thank you. Um, last year when, um, so I'm gonna start presenting the, sorry, I don't, there you go, the academics. So last year when, uh, towards the end of the year, um, and you know, we decided, we, we were, we want, we wanted to continue looking at our vision at our school towards the vision of the district. So we said, uh, we need to evaluate what we've done so far. Um, so we emailed the, the students and, um, we sent a survey and we wanted to hear their voices and kinda like to find out what was working, what was not working. The panorama survey is there and we use it, but sometimes we need to hear more clear from them. So with that information, um, we brought Kathy James and the, um, the operations, uh, committee at that time. We worked on a new schedule. So this year we have a block schedule and the reason why we created that type of schedule is because in order for us to implement that vision and mission that we have in mind is the, it is the right venue for us to be able to do so. So, uh, that allowed us all the, all these activities that you're seeing right there. Um, at MIT, there's a lot of things happening, so I'm pretty sure I'll forget half of them. But, uh, important things to understand is that we have, uh, the seven periods that, the same thing as Kennedy was happening. But we also have something that is, we call the enrichment period. And you guys heard about this at the, um, what Henry Ford, they call it the win time. So we have the advisory period and it's based on the iReady data, the SBAC, the LCAP and all the information that we have. So at the end of last year, we put together all that data and we created the groups for this year. So the students, uh, receive the help that they need during that advisory time, sorry, that enrichment time. But not only that, not only the help, some of them might need to be enriched. So we have computer science with Mr. Wallace. And we have other assigned, other, other subjects that help our students to reach their highest potential. So we are talking about engineering, Mr. Dy, Mr. Dixon teaches in the engineering, expository writing, reading, computer science, like I said, designated ELD or even reading and math enrichment. Those are flexible grouping. So that will change, uh, that changed already during the trimester two. And once we look at iReady data, uh, on the second, no, it's this winter, it will change again on the third, on the third trimester. Where, the second term, I don't know, the next one. Um, so, like I said, we look at the data together with the teachers. The teachers have what we call the PLC. So they meet us at PLC every Thursday. Um, we use Measure U to pay for the time that they take when it's out of their hours. So thank you, Mr. U for that. And, um, we also use those meetings through the lenses of SFS. Uh, we shared last year that we started at MIT, the equity work because it was very important for us and for our population to make sure that they felt hurt and that all the inequities that were happening were interrupted. So our I group, uh, leaders are the leaders of the PLC teams and they look at the data of the students through those, um, protocols that are pulled in, put in place. So they can interrupt those in, inequities and make sure that the students get what they need, but also through those lenses. So, um, looking through that data, we saw the data in fall and we understood that something that it was very important for us, which is the advisory period. And again, it happened last year when we had the, when we asked the teachers what was working and was not. And the, and the community members and the students, and we decided that we needed to have more time for advisory. So for us, advisory is where the student learn, um, we implemented the thinking maps. Um, the teachers went during the summer to do thinking map training and they came back and taught the rest of the teachers. We also have Avid, uh, Isla goes to Avid. And, um, so all these strategies from Avid are utilized during advisory period. And the other piece that is important is that we have, uh, we're gonna start implementing the peer tutoring. We were not there yet. But you know, the students learning about metacognition, how they learn and how they, how they, they, you know, they understand the content. They can teach other students. So the peer coaching is something that is part of Avid and that it's, it's something that is in our route to, to do. So that advisory time, and some, some people ask me, is this where you do SEL? No, the SEL, the social emotional happens every day in the entire school at the same time from eight to eight 30. The students, all of them, uh, all the teachers have their lessons and Ms. Murphy puts them together. And, um, the teachers know exactly what to do. Of course, it depends on the grade and the students. Uh, they adapt using the UDL strategies that we are learning. And, um, that's when we do the social emotional. But it's during advisory when the teacher, when the students get ready to go to high school and then be ready for career, right? So, um, when we looked at the results in fall, we, we found out that, um, there was something that we needed to do and because of, you know, it, it was there. And so we tweaked it a little bit and, um, we created targeted grouping during advisory. So we have, um, students doing Read 180, students doing iReady, students doing Summit K12, students doing all those programs that we know that are working at the same time that other students are doing, um, Math for Love. So everybody that needs something, it's getting it. Everybody. So it's on top of the enrichment program. Now, all of that is academics and, but there's a lot of things happening as well in the elective classes. So we are very proud to say that every single student at MIT has an elective class. So nobody is, uh, left behind. All of them get to choose an elective class. Last year, they gave us a lot of input on what they wanted. And this year with all the funding from the district and the LCAP and all, all that, thank you so much for that. We were able to bring music back to MIT, which is amazing. And we have a full-time MIT teacher, um, and music teacher. Thank you for that. And the students are learning band, orchestra, guitar. Now we also have a full-time STEAM teacher. So that's amazing too. And they love STEAM. Uh, they're doing a lot of hands-on, working on, uh, coding, like, you know, computers, high end. And, um, they went for a field trip, career readiness. So there's a lot of wonderful things that are starting to build and that makes us really, really proud. Again, our leaders, the leadership class, I think that it, i- if, if I have to say something that recognize, will hopefully recognize MIT, will be, sorry, something that will, MIT will recognize, be recognized for will be the leadership. I think we really wanna make our students leaders in the world. Uh, we want them to raise their voice. We want them to understand their power. They have so much power and they have to build it up. So we have three leadership classes. We have, uh, the teachers, they make decisions in everything. She is part of my school's, uh, school site council. She comes, she presents, she, she presents, she talks, she votes. So that's amazing. And, um, all the rest of the electives. Um, and of course, we started last year with, uh, with our goal setting in iReady and we are continuing the, doing this year. And because yes, we didn't have data until, you know, when you want, when you're looking at growth, you have to wait sometimes from the, um, fall to the winter. But we said, why don't we look at the goal, like, like what they did in spring and see, you know, what they did in fall and see how they grew. And we were able to have our pizza, our famous pizza, iReady pizza. And Ms. Murphy, I don't know how many she bought, but there were a lot of them. Uh, we were able to fit in NSA as well. So that was amazing. And, um, and the kids loved it because all the kids that grew, they saw that, you know, there's, you know, there's something. It's not just my personal, yes, I did it, but I also get pizza because I want it. They love it. And, um, so we will continue doing that. That's something that we are going to continue doing, the goal setting. And then with Mr. Hicks joining our team, thank you so much. Um, we started also setting goals for attendance. So our students are late a lot and, uh, not only to the school, but also within periods. So, um, he's working so hard for this, with the students and with contracts with the parents and the students to make sure that they are on time to class. So they don't miss any of the work. Um, and also he has created a lot of support for the teachers in the advisory to set goals with assignments. So we're doing a lot of goal setting, goal setting, goal setting, and looking at the progress. So, um, and then last but not least, I wanna share that this year with the, all the students that we got from, um, Garfield, we were lucky to get also new teachers. And so we've got wonderful teachers that, um, you know, came from overseas. Some of them are here today. I'm so sad, so excited. Um, and, um, and we got teachers that Um, and um, and we got teachers that are first year new teacher, new year teachers. So we talked about it and um, same as the students, we need to look at where our teachers are, right? And so each of them are different and some of them they need different supports. So we decided to do this peer coaching model where some of the teachers teach all the teachers. So um, they meet once a week, we, I I have also another mentee. So we meet once a week, we set goals with them, we visit them in their classes, they tell us what they wanna work on. And um, and then we sa- we give them homework and say, okay, so this week you're gonna do this, see things and then we, we revisit. So all of that is happening at MIT and more. Um, so, and I would like to pass it to Mr. Hicks. So he can talk to you about all the amazing events that are happening at our school. So, there you go. I don't know how to. Where is the? I broke it. Sorry. Thank you so much.
Need it a little higher. Um. My first experience with MIT was at our Mays Day. Our Mays Day was put together by our admin team, Ms. Murphy Artosa. Our family center, which included Ms. Leslie and Ms. Laura, um, that was before Ms. Jackie was with us. Um, and our leadership team of students. We had so many parents show up. It was overwhelming for me. I was so surprised. Parents would come in with their students and they would walk up to Ms. Susanna and hug Ms. Susanna. And then they would go in their maze. Part of their maze was to sign up for sports. Uh, part of their maze was to find out about the great after-school opportunities that we have, such as envisioners and Mr. Jacob Beck here. We also have our Boys and Girls Club where there, including Mr. D and Mr. Arnaldo, the leaders for Boys and Girls Club. We also had, we also had the teachers there. And it was really exciting to see the parents and the teachers come in and the students going, hey, Mr. Wallace. They haven't seen him all summer. Ms. Ha, how are you doing? Hey, and Ms. Kraus. Mister, Mister Hong, how are you? And you could see from that moment, the connection that the parents and the students had with the families. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the events. But what I do wanna highlight is what we value and what we value is celebrating our students. Ms. Murphy over here has done a great job of celebrating our students through iReady growth with what Mitch, Ms. Susanna has already shared with you. Uh, Ms. Murphy also working with Ms. Jackie has celebrated students that have improved their attendance. So we're regularly looking at data, trying to make sure that we reward students that are coming more often. Um, same with the, the pizza day party growth on that, right? Um, another thing that we will be doing for our first ever time is our honor roll breakfast. We're gonna have ours this Thursday. You guys are all welcome to come. It's from eight thirty to nine thirty. It might be a little smaller than Kennedy. Um, but we really wanna celebrate them for our students' hard work and we've invited the parents because we want the parents to be part of our community. I wanna step back and say this again. A lot of times, the honor roll is just about those that are at the top. We wanna celebrate every student. So every student feels welcomed and loved and encouraged, just like the parents and the students felt with the teachers on Mays Day. There's a lot of events there, but I'm gonna wrap it up with one of the most important ones that might be off the screen at the bottom. And MIT is in a unique position that we share a campus with North Star. And early on, we s- we created a relationship with the North Star admin team. Uh, Ms. Susanna and myself worked with Dr. O'Neill and Mr. Havy to create the first ever MIT North Star pep rally. Mr. Havy connected with the Sequoia High School Union Band and they came over. And I got the games together and we took MIT students and partnered them up with North Star students to have a game. Where they competed against each other. MIT and North Star students versus MIT and North Star students. And the theme of the pep rally was teamwork because we are one campus. So that's something that I'm really proud of that we've done. Um, we are a team here. And we celebrate and we love our students. Um, I'm gonna pass this on to Ms. Murphy, our MTSS Tosa.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Katie Murphy and I'm the MTSS Tosa for MIT. I'm so excited to be able to present something that I'm personally passionate about for, as being a classroom educator for twenty-three years. And that Student Voice, and it was very much a part of my foundation in my classroom and I'm excited to be in this role. And be a part of this team to raise up their voices on our campus. Our MIT students are at the center for all that we do and because of this, we are continuing to create opportunities for our students to have voice and agency. We believe that the more that they see themselves as valued stakeholders in their learning community. The more invested they will be in contributing to their own learning and the learning of their fellow bulldog academically, socially, and behaviorally. We'd like to share as a team a few examples of how Student Voice exists at MIT within the RCSD learner framework. At MIT, our school community is creating empowered learners daily. They organize and lead their own lunch clubs with the help of Family Center, with the lunch fair. They've established student leadership-led lunchtime sports tournaments for both students and educators, which can be quite competitive. So if any board members wanna come out and join the team, we'd be happy to. Something that's new to our school this year, as my second year at MIT, is we also wanna create safe pathways for students to be able to share their voice. If they don't feel comfortable going up to talk to an adult. So something called the Bulldog Help Room has been established so that they can reach out and ask for any sort of support. Whether it's academic, emotional, or any sort of safety net for theirs, themselves or their families. Mr. Hicks designed that. And finally, one really important part of this framework is our SEL student focus groups. SEL is an integral part of our daily instruction. We have it every day. And our students were able to participate by grade level a couple of weeks ago and share their inputs so far and how the curric- curriculum's being implemented. And to uh, and how the practices in their daily curriculum beyond SEL. The next framework I'd like to discuss is um, how Student Voice shows up with knowledge constructors. Um, the students are allowed to design and implement systems at our school. One thing that we had a problem with is we kept losing all of our balls at, at lunchtime and recess. Seems like a simple problem, but it's a need, right? Um, and so Mr. Hicks uh said, what do you think? And I said, we need to ask the students. So one of our students, she was just standing next to me along with a couple others, we got it. And within two or three days, they had a, you know, a system, a spreadsheet, kids started coming up and asking to volunteer to actually lead it. So it's off our hands now. And it's actually become quite a social part of the, of the yard. Uh, it, so I'm very proud of that. Um, they've implemented spirit days as they, as it happened last year. But it continues to work because it's their choice and their selection of how they wanna celebrate the year and what they wanna honor and how to have fun at school. And finally, they have, this is my favorite one, one as well for this um construct, is that they were able to lead the student-led assembly this past November. Um, we approached the Link Crew as a family, as the family um center. And myself, and we asked them, what do you think? If we give you a template and we give you a content and some resources, do you think you wanna design and present? Our monthly assembly? And they said, we got it. And so they presented to their fellow bulldog um learners by grade level. Um, a, an assembly on Ruby Bridges and they also invited, or we partnered up with Jackie's help. Um, with someone to come and talk about the week that um focused on uniting against hate. So that was completely student-led. It was beautiful. Uh, our next, continuing on, our next um, uh, frame, uh, excuse me, uh, framework is about creating effective collaborators. We have a very robust leadership elective. Couple of our, Ms. Haw is here. She's one of our educators for leadership. But we have it for sixth grade, for seventh grade, and eighth grade. So it's a huge part of our uh, community. And they collaborate across grade levels. So that's, I think, the sweet spot is that it's not isolated by grade level. But they able to integrate. They did a walking field trip across the grade levels and so it's creating community um, just naturally. And we've also created space at our school site council, which was uh, uh, mentioned earlier. Because we want our students to be a strong voice at the table and know that their ideas matter. And finally, we, this year, the students are starting to participate on the advisory council and Ms. Jackie will speak to that in a little bit. The final framework that I wanna talk about is being a creative communicator. And as you saw tonight, with the way that our presentation launched, that happens every day. Uh, we're very proud of our students. They step up, they're proud to share the workload and participate and create a better school. And that's a perfect example and uh mentor texts, that's what I used to tell my students of what happens at our school every day. We like to give our students mul- multiple chances to be uh leaders and communicate to adults on campus. They were student ambassadors at Mays Days, Back to School Night, they helped. Our school's quite large and they're long hallways and they all kinda like the same, so they were very helpful with guiding parents along the campus. And they also helped with Unity Day and our monthly, as I mentioned, grade level. I'm really proud of the work that our students are doing and we're gonna continue to raise their voices. Because it's not about their time just at MIT, but it's how they walk into the world and that their voices matter. Um, so at this point, thank you for listening and I am very grateful and I have the pleasure to introduce to you a strong Student Voice on our campus, Diana Mora.
As the most uh recent Link Crew member of the month, I'm here to, I'm here tonight to talk about uh how Link Crew creates a student voice in our community. Our Link Crew members have the opportunity to share their ideas on how to improve the school and how to improve student voices on campus. Our school gives us the space during our Link Crew meetings to share with Ms. Jack and Ms. Laura. About our ideas to im- improve our school and relationship with students. Some ways we've helped to improve uh the school community. Um, whereby sending our first summer was by starting our first summer bridge for uh new incomers to our school. This really helps students connect with their new school community. We also volunteered to go to events and uh, so we can help out. This is an extra help for staff. Uh, sometimes by either hosting or helping plan out a school assemblies. Link Crew members put their time and effort into helping, planning events for students to join. And we make sure our events get student interested. We, we think since we're the same age as uh other students in our school, we have almost the same interest. So if we come up with things we like, we want to put it in fun and exciting events, so that way more students uh will participate. We also try our best to involve more student uh voices, so they will have their best MIT experience. And with uh, with Link Crew, we, we are helping uh, we're teaching sixth and seventh grade on what we do. And what it, what Link Crew is, so that way once they're in eighth grade, they will like to hopefully join Link Crew as well. And we also help with leadership in the family center. Um, I will pass it on to Ms. Jackie.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Campos and I'm the Community School Coordinator at McKinley and this is actually my first year. And can I just say, it has been such a great experience so far. So thank you to Mrs. Anna, Mr. Hicks. Our wonderful Link Crew leaders and Ms. Murphy and all of our teachers and everyone involved, our parents. Can't thank everyone enough for such a warm welcome. Um, so at MIT, we understand that the well-being and success of our students coincides with actively engaging and supporting our families. So this year, one of our primary goals was to really work together to amplify the voices of our parents and our families within the school community. So today, I'm really excited to highlight a few ways in which we've enhanced parent voice and outreach. And I will share some testimonials for what parents are expressing about their experiences at MIT. So in our commitment to fostering open communication and building a strong sense of community, we host Capacitos twice a month. Not only is this an opportunity for our pa- our families to be informed, um, communicate with the principal. But these Capacitos encourage community building. It's a time to connect with our school admin, with our Family Center staff, with other teachers, to connect with other families. To fa- for families to learn from each other and build long-lasting relationships. Additionally, we intentionally build connections so that we can create a safe space where our families feel comfortable coming and sharing their concerns with us. And I think my favorite part of the Capacito is, it is the most fun part of my day. We dance zumba, we listen to music, we eat really good food. And then we had arepas, pupusa, salvadorian quesadillas. It's, it's been a really great experience. And we actually have one tomorrow morning at seven forty-five and we will have pozole. So if any of you wanna come by, please do so. It is in our family center. Um, so building on our dedication to empowering parents and creating a truly collaborative school community. Our families play a key role in organizing our fundraisers. The idea for our two fundraisers, the Zumba-Thon and the Market, Winter Market and Festival, actually came about from our Capacitos. Just a conversation, asking parents, what do you guys wanna do? How should we raise money for our school? What event should we put on? And they're really instrumental in putting on and organizing these events. And I wanna give a special shout out to Board Trustee Marcus for coming out to our Zumba-Thon. Thank you so much for joining us. It was so fun dancing with you and I know the parents had such a blast and they were so happy to see you there. Um, so as I was saying, none of these events would be possible if it wasn't for our amazing parents. They are just the greatest. Uh, for example, for the pozole tomorrow, I texted them in the WhatsApp and I was like, hey, uh, Pro Salva's bringing pozole. Who can bring chips? Who can bring soda? Parents signed up right away. They were like, I'll bring the chips, I'll bring the soda. It was, it's just such a great experience working with them and I've really enjoyed it. Um, and so I hope that you all can join us at our Winter Festival and Market, which will be on Saturday, December sixteenth. Um, additionally, I would like to thank the California Community Schools Partnership Program Grant. Um, due to that grant, we're actually able to onboard a community school specialist. And this grant has empowered us to enhance our support, our support services for students and our families. This allows us to address academic and attendance-related needs more comprehensively, which is something that parents were asking us for. By actively engaging with our families, our community school specialist fosters a collaborative environment where they're able to address concerns and successes. Um, in a safe space. Another component of this grant that has been really great is the establishment of the Advisory Council. Uh, with the Advisory Council, we have a platform in which we have parents, students. Um, actually, our two students here are on our Advisory Council. They are such great leaders to our school. Um, and school staff, and we work collaboratively to analyze data and address gaps in our services. Um, in addition to the Advisory Council, we're actively conducting parent-focused groups. And these sessions will provide a valuable opportunity for parents to directly engage and share their insights on how they view our services for students and families. And where we, where can we improve? And we're really looking forward to diving into that data as an Advisory Council. And creating an action plan to go after those gaps. Um, and finally, in our ongoing commitment to comprehensive family support and engagement. Our Family Center is dedicated to actively um engaging with families and addressing the needs of our students and families. Through a systematic approach that involves outreach calls and a referral process, we assess the needs of our ba- our parents and our students. And we ensure a holistic understanding of the challenges that they face. We recognize the importance of providing access to essential resources that contribute to the well-being of our community. This includes distribution of clothing, toiletries, food, ensuring that families have the basic necessities. So that they, our students are able to be successful in that, in their academics. Um, another thing that we do in the Family Center is we have been doing um home deliveries. There's been a really big need in our community for, for home deliveries of food and toiletries. A lot of our families don't live near our school and don't have cars or don't have a driver's license. So the Family Center team and I, we've been heading out and doing home visits and we plan to do a few of those over the winter break as well. Um, I would now like to showcase two testimonials that offer a glimpse into the perspectives of parents regarding our school. Um, and these testimonials have been translated from Spanish to English. So one parent says, speaking of the classes and specifically for my son, I like the motivation he currently has regarding the honor roll certificate they were given. Regarding the Family Center, I love going to the Capacito, although sometimes it is not possible. I like it because you can express your doubts with the principal and the ladies at the Family Center. and the ladies at the Family Center, and they take the time to really explain to you. Moms, if one day you have a little time, give yourself the opportunity to go. Another parent said, from my point of view, I am very happy with the support my son receives. It is his first year at MIT. I didn't have the pleasure of attending a Cafecito yet because of work, but I am very happy with all of the work done by the entire school staff and all the motivation the principal provides. I'd like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to share about our school tonight.
Thank you all so much. So that concludes our presentation.
All right. I see a handout coming. All right. Well, thanks. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's awesome to hear about all the things that are going on at McKinley. Go Bulldogs. I want to start just thanking the Link Crew for the handout that we're getting here, but also for coming and just, you know, presenting in front of the board. You heard before that we know that sometimes these things can be stressful. So it's impressive how, how easy and with, you know, with, with great ease that the two of you presented and spoke to us. And it's just, it's neat to hear about not just the Link Crew, but just all of the student-led and student-voice activities that are going on at MIT, particularly student-led, like the assemblies and the morning announcements. But, but the ideas and pushing back, I'm not pushing back, but you know, creating the idea for like to bring the summer bridge back. I don't know if it was back or actually to do the summer bridge, but that's just neat to hear. Because these are, these are eighth graders. I mean, they've been here for so long to remember that transitioning into sixth grade is a challenge and you want to make sure that that's a, that's a good experience. I saw in the newsletter that you had Unity Days, I think it was on the slide too. I didn't remember last year, what an impact they had for your school and your community. How did it go this year?
It was huge last year and that's why we asked for it again. And we couldn't have done it without the support of Antonio Perez in the district. So thank you so much for that. So again, this year with the getting a hundred and twenty students from Garfield, we are creating, that means that you have to recreate the culture in the community. And we tried to do it at the beginning of the year, but it was not possible for some conflicts. But it was, it was so necessary that we did it as soon as possible. So as soon as we met with them, I said, give me the earliest time that we have. And it happened November. We split the, the grades because we have a lot of students within the same grade and it has to be small groups. And the Link Crew, they got trained, they already did over the summer, so it was kind of like a review. And they got trained to lead the groups with the teachers. So a group of ten students with two students from eighth grade and a teacher were working together to say, you know, talk about what, what the, what they like about the school, who's the person that supports them at school, recognize some of their challenges. So it, we know, and I told my team that it was going to happen and it happened. It shakes some of them because it's kind of like looking inside and sometimes they struggle to go inside and say, what is happening to me? So we know that that was going to happen and we provided the supports. And of course, we, I was talking to the counselors today and we said, next year, when we do it, we need to make sure that the structure, so we are already planning on how to make it better. But automatically, what you see is kids saying, oh, I'm making friends. Now, this one is my friend. I didn't know that he was, you know what? We have the same problems. So that is, to me, is the biggest piece, is that you see the students getting along because they know each other, because they have that venue and that opportunity to get to know each other and to know that they're all in the same boat. So it's huge. It is a huge, huge event.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. It was, I, I loved also hearing about the advisory period and the enrichment period and how that's flexible grouping and you sort of revisit it every trimester or even within the trimester. That's, that's really exciting. And I'll just touch on one other thing, the community school, just hearing about what the Family Center is doing. I love our community school model and how broadly it's been rolling out in Redwood City and expanding the additional funding that's come in to provide the additional support there. That's amazing to hear about. It plays, you know, the, the Family Center is vital to the school, but really vital to many families. And I just think that it, it's one of the most important things that we do here. And I'm, I'm really glad to hear about the, you know, the impact that it's having and, and some of the updates there. Particularly, you know, like even the home deliveries, just talking about that. That's the one that sort of just reminded me of like just how critical these, these, the Family Center is. So yeah, thank you, Susanna, David, Katie, Jackie for presenting tonight. Thank you for your staff and partners that are here and online. Really appreciate hearing about MIT.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I really enjoyed the whole presentation. Thank you to all of you who spoke. And I'm actually hoping to come out. Jackie had invited me to the Cafecito tomorrow morning and it sounds like you're also having an honors breakfast. Did I hear that? Oh, that's next Thursday. Okay. Well, I won't be in town sadly, but I will come to the Cafecito tomorrow. So I will see you there for the pupusos or no, what? No, not.
Pozole.
Pozole. Yes, I also like that. I like all of it. So anyway, and I'll just, it'd be nice to see you following up with this. So just expect me there tomorrow. And Jackie, you know, I'm so, you know, you were with Redwood City together. You've supported us so much, the whole community, and we are so happy to have you at MIT. You're clearly doing an awesome job. You can just tell that you just like zip right in. And I'm sure you must love the ability just to work now directly with families and students every day, right? Anyway, so thank you. And thank you, Susanna, for your leadership. We're so happy to have you at MIT. The school just continues to get better and better. I love, you know, with some of the resources, I mean, you mentioned the, you know, every student's getting elective class now. I mean, years ago, that was not true. And then, you know, now we have a full-time music teacher, full-time STEAM teacher. So the students are really getting the enrichment they need to be successful in life and also just to be engaged and have fun. And the more engaged they are, the more they're going to want to come to school, right? So it all is all part of the package. So I loved hearing about all of that. You know, what you said about creating the leaders of the world, it kind of goes back to what we talked about with Kennedy and the same with you. And just loved having the students here. You guys are amazing leaders. I love that, you know, you said that in sixth grade, you didn't feel like the mentoring program really worked for you or it wasn't sort of where you want it to be. And then as an eighth grader, you were able to sort of take all those ideas and make it better for the next generation, which is exactly, you know, giving back and great announcements. I definitely want to listen to those tomorrow. And what skill set? I mean, you could be like on TV or the radio. A journalist in the making. I love it. Yeah. And thank you so much. I mean, honor student of the month or I think that's what you, what you are. Really appreciate to hear from you as well. Let's see, I wanted, oh, but one thing I wanted to mention, and I'm so happy. Is this the first like truly kind of joint North Star MIT? I mean, I know that you've, you know, shared field days, but it's usually like the MIT kids are on and then the North Star kids are on. Sounds like you actually did a joint activity in a big way.
I heard from a teacher at North Star, this, it only took, no, I think it was somebody, Mr. Wallace, only took twenty-five years.
Yeah. We've been talking about it for a long time. So thank you for making it happen. And I really liked that you, you know, it wasn't North Star against MIT that you mixed it. So important to do that. And I just, I hope we can look for additional opportunities, you know, particularly around elects, electives and enrichment. And if, you know, if you've got different gradients of some math classes or things like that, there's some pretty obvious places that there could be more merging, right? If we could just figure it out. So anyway, good job. Glad that's happening. Just want to see, oh, and I just, you know, I really like hearing about the advisory time. That's great. Is that every day?
It is on Thurs, oh, sorry, on Tuesdays for seventy-five minutes.
Okay, Tuesdays for seventy-five minutes. And then the other day, they're getting enrichment and electives.
Yes, exactly. For another, yeah, another block.
Great. And I just want to say a special hello to Ms. Kraus. My daughter Clara worked in her classroom, I think a couple of, at least one year, if not a couple of years, helping with robotics. Yeah, she helped. Yeah, she started the whole thing at MIT along with Suba and you. And anyway, so I just want to say a special shout out. It's nice to see you there. And I'm so, so I mean, at that point, hardly any kids were getting robotics at the school. And Clara, who was over at Sequoia, my daughter, recognized that those students really needed, you know, they needed the experience because if you don't have the experience in middle school, you're probably not going to do it in high school. And it's so cool to hear that it's really expanded, right? So anyway, kudos to all of you. Really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
All right. Really need to hear about peer tutoring. People are probably sick of my, I've got certain themes and peer tutoring is one of them to cheerlead. So very happy to hear that that's happening. Awesome to see the leadership of the eighth graders to help welcome in the, the sixth graders. Explicitly teaching metacognition, also my fellow trustees will, will know that that's music to my ears, very proven technique. It's a very high efficacy technique. So it's great to see that. I wasn't as familiar with Avid, so I was doing a little research here as this was going on, advancement through individual determination. And one of the things that I really appreciated about that is one of my go-tos is the What Works Clearinghouse. And What Works Clearinghouse completed a study that showed that Avid is efficacious. So yay for following data-driven practices.
And let me just say, Avid in the high schools, those students are all going to colleges. I mean, like ninety-nine percent of them are getting into four-year colleges and getting scholarships and all sorts of, it's an amazing program. And I was so happy to hear that we, you know, we finally started in middle school here.
And we are partnering with Sequoia, so we've met with them a couple of times already. And our Avid teachers also meeting with, I think it's you, I don't remember. Yeah. So because there's so many meetings. So, but yeah, we are meeting with them because we want to bring, we want to, we want the students to go there and visit and understand and just to start doing the bridging of our students into the high school because it has to happen.
One of the most successful programs, I think.
Yes, I agree totally, completely.
I, I think it's great. And just like as a relatively new board member, I get presented with lots of different programs that, that folks are in. And so just to see that this program is particularly grounded in science and has third-party studies showing that it's an efficacious technique is also music to my ears. That's, that's, it's very happy. I'm curious, what was the system that the students came up with to get the balls returned at recess? As mentioned, that some system had been devised.
Go ahead. Come here so they can hear you.
So basically they have to write their name, their last name, their advisory teacher. We wrote down a set digit code for each ball plus what type of ball it is. So there's a set of rules that if they didn't turn in the ball certain amount of times, they would be put on like a probation period where they could not check it out unless they prove themselves again. So it was just really good. And they've been really good in turning them in again. So.
That is fantastic. I, I was, I was a little confused. I don't think this was explained in the presentation, but I, I saw Nueva School and Castaleja being presented in, in the deck and I, I don't recall that.
It was, it was a high school fair. So we did a high school fair. We did two, what at Kennedy, because we, everybody goes to the Kennedy High School Fair. So there was, those were, you took those pictures. There was, she took those pictures. And that's from that fair. But we, there was also a picture from our high school fair where our parents came into our school because we do all the registration for high school and we need the parents to be there. So it was about that. It was that piece of the, the fair.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Of course.
Re-evolution assemblies was also a bullet.
The re-evolution assemblies is something that happened last year and we're hoping to bring again this year. And it was, so you know, this is a time where the students need to understand how to make good decisions. So this is an assembly where we partnered with two fellows that have been in jail for a few time, understanding why they were in jail. And sometimes it's not because they did something, it's because they were with someone. So it's that part that our students sometimes need to understand is that, you know, well, I didn't do anything. You know, like it's, you know, you're part, sometimes we're part of it just by being there. So and not only that, but also empowering them to talk about how they feel and how, you know, what is leading them to, to make those decisions. So it was very powerful last year. I'm hoping that we can bring it back again this year because the students, again, it shook some of our students. And those pieces that are there, then it helps us like see what's going on. And then we have the tools to address it. So otherwise, we, sometimes we don't see it.
Thank you for explaining that.
Of course.
Hooray again for WhatsApp groups, using effective communication techniques to connect with your family. So to Dr. Baker's point, maybe more schools are actually using this than you realize. Yeah, it was great, great to hear. Also very happy to hear about home visits. Again, a proven effective solution for addressing many attendance problems. And I love pozole and it bugs me that I have a work conflict tomorrow morning.
You can come to the Winter Fest. Yes. And it's a market as well. So we will have on the front of the school, they went on a field trip and they pass up the flyers to vendors. So we're going to have a market at the front. So you can, you can buy your things for the holidays and then at the back, we'll have the whole festival.
That is fantastic. Good call. Thank, thank you so much.
Of course. I'll bring it from Colorado.
Cecilia, did you want to go?
Again, thanks everyone for the presentation. And I'm going to stick to the theme, which was to thank the students and, you know, for being brave. I did like that McKinley took a little bit of a different twist by actually allowing the student to come in first and speak and introduce the presentation. So I actually really liked that. And so again, to that student, thank you so much for your bravery. And one of the things that we also, well, I learned with Alyssa at that third session of the conference this weekend was, excuse me, the connection with students. And one of the things that they said is, we hear you, we see you and you matter. And so I just want to throw it out there that every student in this district, we see them, we hear them and they matter. So it really does make a big difference when you get involved. And so I do want to greatly appreciate your involvement. And then we hope that your peers can follow your footsteps. So I really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And again, to the administration, Susanna, thank you so much for your leadership as well as the vice principals. And of course, every teacher that works there. And like I mentioned before, some schools hold a different special place in our hearts. As most of you know, over thirty years ago, McKinley was the first school I attended coming to this country as an immigrant. So it really does hold a very special place in my heart. So thank you so much for everything that you guys do. And Mr. Giggs did mention, you know, one of the values of McKinley is that they want to celebrate all students. And so again, thank you so much for, for making that and emphasizing that we are here for all our students. So again, thank you so much. And we'll see you around. I hopefully will be better for the Winter Fest. I do have it on my calendar. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And McKinley is growing the future leaders of the world and we know that. Estella, did I say it right? Oh, He sala? Okay. And Diana, thank you both for being here. Like I said to Kosi and Ariel, I think it's very brave of you to be here. I'm very proud of you for speaking at a board meeting. I think you're both very poised and well-spoken. He sala, I appreciate the ownership you took of the announcements and wanting to write them yourself. And Diana, I think it's really important to have student voice on the, the school site council. I, as a parent, sit on the school site council for my oldest son's high school and I very much value having the students there too. So I hope you consider that going into high school also. I started in my leadership roles that I've had over the years as a student at McKinley, enrolled in the leadership class. And so hopefully in a few years, we can see some more Bulldogs sitting up here at this desk advocating for the students that come after you. David, I appreciate your, I'll let you cough. Your focus on attendance, you know, we talk about making sure the students are at school, but also they need to be in class on time. Every minute matters. So I really hope that with your efforts there, we can see the tardiness decrease. So thank you for that focus. I love the idea of celebrating all the students for all of their accomplishments and their growth. I think growth is important. They might not be, you know, A students, but if they're going from D's to B's, that's, that's huge and they should be celebrated for that. And let's see, things that haven't been talked about. I didn't know that we had Avid in our district, so that's awesome. I love that. And then I want to say, Mr. Jacob in Visioneers, is that the engineering class?
Is the, is the, is one of our standard learning programs.
Okay, okay, awesome. I love that. Thank you for taking charge of that. I love PaSole. Every morning I drive my ninth grader to school in San Jose, so I can't make any of the morning stuff. I'm very sad, but I'll try to be there at Winter Festival.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Dr. Baker?
Susanna here too.
I know.
It's a lot better, right?
Yes, I know what I'm doing. Except that every year there's new challenges. And I'm like, okay, we can, we can make it work. I like it.
I, your attitude is fantastic. It's fantastic. We can do it. I know I can do it. We can do it. And you have a fantastic team. David, thank you for joining us. Also, thank you for coming in, joining the Redwood City School District. I know your, your former boss is not happy with us, but that's, that's okay. That's okay. That, that, that is fine. And, and Katie, it's, it's great having you do everything that you do for the school site. And of course, our teachers that are with us this evening, thank you all very, very, very much. And our two students, as board members have said, your manner of speaking is incredible for the age that you are at, and you are the future leaders of your community. So hopefully you will go very, very far. This is just the beginning. You know, you, you're amazing. Susanna, the, I was surprised. We, we had talked, board members individually when we meet, about the Unity Days and how there was an issue with that with the county. But it's great that you were able to do this again. I didn't think it was going to happen.
It happened.
Well, that's great. That's, that's really good. I was really surprised. I go, oh, and I know I had read it in the newsletter, but I was wondering, okay, because I heard what was the scuttlebutt that was going on at the county office of Ed? And how they kind of put us as superintendents all on notice. But that's great that you brought it forward. So.
It was Antonio. He's the one that made it happen.
I will check in with Antonio tomorrow about that. That is really good. Because I know there were some other school sites that also wanted to go in that direction. But remember, that first day we all met, I halted. I said, no, you can't do any of it because of the, and David, if you don't recall, we could talk about it tomorrow. About what had taken place at the county office and so forth. But great. I, I'm really pleased with that. The other piece is that the morning announcements are wonderful and they go, what, is there only a minute?
It says about a minute to five minutes.
Oh, good. And you do it yourself? I mean, you put it together and then you?
The teachers who organized it.
Okay.
Sometimes students come up to me and want something that is, so I have that.
Perfect. Congratulations to you. And David, the pep rally was wonderful. I was there. It was one of the hottest days. Oh, my gosh, it was hot. And then I was there right when the students were starting, you were up on this, was it a stage? I can't remember. You were up. I was in front of the Blacktop. And then Susanna, Emily, David, Jacob, you were up there too, participating.
Yeah, Emily and I didn't win.
I know you didn't win. But kudos to you guys. You put it together. And I, kids were on Blacktop. And then the other kids, of course, that were participating. Great pep rally. Great. But I just thought to myself, oh, my God, it's so hot out here. But, but everybody was enthusiastic and, and there. And teachers, some of us got to chat. I was kind of going over toward the shade once, but a great event, great event. Are you planning on doing that again?
Yes.
Let us know.
Of course.
It was, it was a great activity. And then definitely, you know, Susanna, I want to congratulate you, second year and doing wonderful things.
Thank you.
The school site. You know, we appreciate everything you do. And everyone here, all the teachers, parents, thank you all.
Of course.
Yes. Don't really have to stay.
Yeah, thank you everyone for being here. You're welcome to stay, but I know it's late. So we won't be offended if you need to leave.
You don't have to say that twice.
I could use a spring through it.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think I can do it. Let's just keep going.
I just want to give.
Nine, ten, that or so.
I've given that up on schedule appointments.
Yeah, exactly.
I said nine fifty.
I had nine thirty.
All right. Well, I will approve, I mean, I'll make them up.
Okay, was there a second?
Yeah, I made a motion to approve ten.
Seconded. Okay.
All those in favor?
I.
Great, thank you. So we are on eleven point one, first reading and approval of Board Policy and Regulation six one seven four, Education for English Learners.
Is Kelly.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to everyone who read over this policy thoroughly, because tonight is a little bit unique in regards to it being a first read and a second read, but certainly time for discussion. I appreciated the outreach of questions and I, I did want to address one of those as we progress along. So if you don't mind, I'll just dive in with doing so. So there was one question that came forward regarding this particular policy. And I first want to say kudos to our Director of Multilingual Education, Catherine Rivera, for really looking at this policy with a fine-tooth comb, ensuring that we are making movement in many areas or have solidified the areas that are laid out here already. And of course, always following ed code and any other applicable laws as this update includes. There was much more work within the ARs needed, the administrative regulations, but that was an important piece. So one question that did come forth on page seven of the board policy that addresses schools in which parents or legal guardians of thirty students or more per school or the parents or legal guardians of twenty students or more in any grade request a language acquisition program designed to provide language instruction must be required to offer such a program to the extent possible. And I just wanted to point out, we actually did do this and we practiced this exact moment in this particular policy when the Mandarin immersion program began years ago. So there was a group of parents that came together and after a study and an analysis, it was determined that that could move forward. And that was actually a perfect example of putting that in practice. So that was one item that came up as a question. I do want to point out the language to the extent possible, that really requires multiple steps, space, finances and so forth. There's, there's you know, the curriculum pieces, there's so many parts involved in that. But it was a success to, to have a recent example of that. So anyhow, that was, that was one item that came up. And then also just noting the language acquisition programs that we actually do offer are outlined on our website through our language acquisition options that parents are exposed to and are able to review upon enrollment to our district, unless they've, of course, heard about it in other means, tours and so forth. But that does include dual immersion, our fifty fifty bilingual program, certainly. So although this particular policy is titled Educating English Learners, it's really all potential language programs in our district to become biliter or bilingual and or bilingual, and bilingual, I should say. So with that, is there any other additional comments or discussion items on this particular topic?
Do we, do we anticipate this policy being exercised for other languages? Like, do we have anything coming down the pipe that may be passing this policy like, oh, yeah, we should have seen that coming?
Not that I'm aware of. No, no. And when we did review the Mandarin immersion, it took us a little over a year. That was a previous superintendent at the time. I was in curriculum and instruction. And we went out and we did our research. We also met with parents several times. And took a gauge and talked with, I won't say many, several other Mandarin immersion programs. And even went to visit a private one that was in, that's in San Francisco that is very well known. And determined if we had a number of students that we could move forward. And that was a condition that we had when we met with the parents. Knowing that we, as the Redwood City School District, would not be the entity that would be doing all this community work and out there trying to garner parents for this. And so that's how it was agreed upon. The board then, when I became superintendent, brought it to them as a recommendation.
The parents did a lot of work.
A lot.
A lot of the outreach.
That, that makes sense. I'm just like double checking on like, do we have anything on our early warning radar that, oh, yeah, the Russian community, the Arabic community, like, I know there's a lot of languages that are spoken.
There are thirty-seven.
Yeah, so there, there's a lot that are out there.
We can't do thirty-seven.
Is there, is there, right. Is there enough concentration developing in any of them that we should be thinking of like, oh, this, this policy that we're discussing might get invoked and it'll take a lot of planning for anything to happen. But I wonder if like.
Not that I've heard of.
Nothing's currently on our radar.
Nothing's currently on our radar.
Okay, great.
I'll, I'll also point out that it's, that language, I actually looked it up, is literally taken from ed code or the California code regulations for Title V. So because they were my questions. Thank you, and thank you, Catherine. I don't know if you're online or not, but she answered. Yeah.
You just know that that was something.
Yeah.
Popped up for everybody.
Yeah, it was, it was one that was like, wow, that's an interesting, an interesting requirement that's there. And it really comes down to the extent possible. And that's vague, but I guess that also means that that leaves some flexibility for figuring out, is this something that's actually viable for the district to offer? So. But thank you for answering the questions and for discussing it here.
You know, one thing, just to take this opportunity, because we were talking about this, a couple of us, when we were at the CSBA Annual Conference, is there's always a lot of sessions on English learners and dual immersion programs, immersion programs. And there are still so many school districts that are not doing any kind of immersion programs, any kind of dual language programs. And they have high numbers of Spanish-speaking students or other, you know, Russian students or whatever it is. And it just once again made me so proud of the fact, I mean, we were one of the early, you know, initiators of adelante and the Spanish immersion. And so anyway, so it's interesting to see this policy. And I have a feeling the policy is a lot because some school districts have not moved as quickly as they need to move. And so now, you know, governments are saying, yeah, you need to do it. So anyway.
And also the fifty fifty programs that we just heard about from our Hoover presentation, you know, last week and is going on at Garfield. Yeah.
Right, it's a good point. I mean, you know, we have our full immersion and then we have the dual language. So, yeah. Anyway, so our students are being well-served with the languages and really feeling included to be able to come to the school, you know, with their own language, which is nice.
So I'm hearing we're, we're a bit ahead of the game. This is more for the laggards. We're not in that group. And we're not anticipating that there's going to be meaningful change, again, because we're ahead of the curve on a bunch of this stuff. And the language is kind of mandated to be approved.
And, and you have to, and, and, and just to go back about regarding the Mandarin immersion.
Yeah.
It was not, the majority were not our own parents in this district that were bringing it forth. And that's one thing I know our previous superintendent had a concern about.
At the time, though, we were state-funded. And so we were looking for programs that would attract students to our district, right? So it's a different landscape now, right?
Exactly.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Do we have any public?
She's running my meetings.
I'm so sorry. I'm just trying to, yeah, okay, I'll shut up, Janet.
I assume there's no public.
I don't have any speaker cards.
Okay, go ahead. Is there a motion?
Oh, Janet, I like the motion. Thank you for asking.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I'm so sorry.
All those in favor? I, okay, great. Thank you. What are we on? Twelve point one, report from board members and superintendent. Anybody would like to just hop in? Cecilia, you too, if you would like to.
Yeah, I, so I went to the honor breakfast. We talked about that before. Over two hundred and fifty students were celebrated there. One was, yes, the child of one of our board members, dude. So we got, we got to see him in time. So that was fun. You know, and I, we mentioned it before, it was principal's honor roll and honor rolls. That's like three point seven five and above for those ones. But attendance, yeah. And iReady Excellence, which was accomplishing your iReady courses, I think, like the tasks, the learning, learning units that you had to take from it. So it wasn't necessarily about like a score on iReady. It was really about accomplishing the work that could be there. And as Chandra said tonight, I think the next time it'll be about growth, showing that there. So it really does throw a cast a wide net. And so that was, and it was, it was a lot of people. I can't, I can't stress that again. It was a lot of fun.
Just like there was no fire marshal going, do you remember that, that fire marshal we used to have?
Yeah, it was a healthy, you know, little bob at the top from the, the cooking outside. Smelled great, though. And I don't eat sausage. So I'll tell you, it smelled good. We did not have, we had a scheduled measure you parcel tax oversight committee, but we weren't able to get a quorum. So that meeting did not convene. And then, of course, I went to AEC, the Annual Educators Conference, which was a lot of fun. Unfortunately, for personal reasons, had to leave like halfway during the day because my wife had to go out of town at the last minute. But lots of really good sessions. Saw some on, there was attendance one was, had some interesting bits in it and some was a little bit more about what they were doing, but what we also do here. And so I think David and I were actually talking about, we should probably have a structured way for us to be able to share some feedback about it. Maybe like write up our notes and we can either agendize it or even just write up notes and like push to each other with no comment back and forth.
Right.
Just to hear because we all went to different sessions, which I thought was great and be really awesome to be able to share that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, just to, to that point, I, I would love for us to find a Brown Act compatible way for us to be continuously learning as board members and sharing those findings with each other, but also with the public, right? So it's not anything that's being done in the dark. We can go and publish in comment-free forums, so we don't accidentally create a serial meeting or anything like that. Like, I, I, I think that would be great. Yeah, I, I think we should all be learners and be exemplifying learning in, in our district. So let's find a way to do that.
Yeah, so I also, of course, was at the CSBA Annual Conference and before that had board meetings and delegate assembly. And I went to several really good sessions around kind of sustainability and climate and solar infrastructure. And it was great to hear Will talking about the Inflation Reduction Act, because that was one of the things, I had a whole checklist of things to come back. And I talked to Will and we're already sort of doing some of those. That's great. And then Rick, I do have a couple of things I'm going to give you, just some procurement stuff that I, you know, I did the whole exhibit hall and collected some few things that I think might be able to save us money. So always looking for that. I did want to give a shout out to Cecilia, who's I know on the call. We were able to go to the Dream Club. She invited a few of us there and that was great. And many of the Dream Club participants were, are students, former students of Redwood City. So it was nice to be there. So thank you, Cecilia. And thanks to Sequoia. And then I did want to just mention, I was at the Safe Routes to Schools meeting today. And, you know, Jackie was the one who coordinated it. So they took a little hiatus and they just had their first meeting today. Raphael was awesome. They have actually, they're in the cities and in the process of hiring somebody who's going to start in January. And it sounds like it's a person who went to the Redwood City Schools, went to Sequoia, community member. They wouldn't say the name because they're still working out a few details. But anyway, hopefully have someone soon. But I did want to mention, because a few things, if you remember the, I think it's called the Stambro Bridge, which is the one that goes over.
Stamba.
Stamba Bridge. So remember, we heard from some parents how dirty it was and unsafe. So the good news is the city is now out there twice a week cleaning it up and providing some additional just safety around that. And I don't know if we've heard anything recently. I'm going to be out at Hoover next week. And so I'll ask around, but we haven't heard anything in the last few weeks since I think this started. So hopefully things are better, but they've really taken a look at that. And then we heard an update on the bus passes. If you remember, we now have seven hundred and sixty-six students who have received bus passes, helping them get to school and other, you know, enriching activities because they can use them anything. And I, they did an amount, it's saving the families eighty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And these are all free bus passes from Samtrans to our students of need. So that's awesome. And, oh, and then they did talk about the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, which went really well. And I know we heard about it a little bit here. I think that's been working really well. And then they've got a group of parents who are, it was great. These are Roy Cloud parents that I've known for a while. And some of them are now helping Hoover set up a walk. And some of them are now helping Hoover set up a walking school bus because they've been successful at Roy Cloud doing that. And so it was really nice to see sort of some of.
Walking school bus?
Yes, well, it, yeah, so it's 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 uh students and families walking together um in part for safety and just, you know, to have fun. So you kind of create a bus. I don't know. I actually have a checklist. I've actually not participated. Actually, that's not true. I have participated in one, but they they've actually put together a checklist of how to form it and all that. And they're working with parents to do that.
And I think it's off, sorry, often like one or two parents that lead the school bus. So other parents don't have.
Pick them up. They have, they have stop, you know, like the walking school bus stops, like we pick you up at this time. So be there. So kid, you know, parents who need to work. I know, I know. So we'll have to go out and see that.
Yeah, let's let's check that out.
Yeah. And then they are also, this group of parents are advocating to Redwood City about the fifteen miles an hour zones around our schools. Because what Redwood City said is it's going to take um people advocating for it. So it's really nice to see. And again, that's where we'd city together now, really involving the community in a way that we didn't see a few years ago. So awesome. Okay, that's it.
Cool. Um, I I attended CSBA, not as much as I would have liked, because I came in from a leadership retreat in Philadelphia and I was just cross eyed from the cold. So um I figured showing up at a multi thousand person conference like sneezing on everyone would would not be very well welcomed. So I stayed in my own bed. Uh, sorry, Evelyn. And and then, um, you know, it came when it when I when I felt healthy to do so. Um, it it was, it was interesting. Uh, I went to a Science of Reading meeting uh there. Uh, it talked about letters, L E T R S, all caps, as a professional development uh tier long course that was uh pretty highly efficacious for getting getting teachers on board with Science of Reading. This is part of been part of what's uh helped really turn things around in Mississippi, which went from like last in the Union um to like do doing pretty decently. Um, they use the Dibbles uh assessment um as well and and spoke highly of that.
He used to use Dibbles.
Used to use. Okay, right. That's it's, you're aware of it. Um, and they described that a bunch of their their approaches around Science of Reading uh not only helped their uh regular students, but also were very effective for their dyslexic students. So you got kind of a twofer there, which I thought was great. Um, touring the show floor, uh found uh vendor I thought would be interesting, swing subs. Turns out we're using them. It's great. Uh, swing subs.
Swing subs, yeah.
That's, so it's pretty, pretty awesome. I love it when Dr. Baker is two steps ahead of me, which is most of the time. Um, yeah, found out about uh ORCAM Learn, which is like a twenty seven hundred dollar device that reads text out loud. Um, was is not super impressive. Talked with a bunch of other vendors. The um Salman Khan gave uh one of the talks. Um, so for for those who weren't at CSBA, which is probably everyone watching this recording or in the audience. Um, it it was, it was interesting to hear in particular, we'd known for a long time that tutoring is really effective, is the Bloom two sigma problem. Uh, it's why we do a lot of uh tutoring, MTSS, uh tier three kind of interventions, why peer tutoring is very effective. And it was very interesting to hear the cut point that GPT three five wasn't quite good enough to be a good tutor, but GPT four is. Um, and relevant to that, uh today, Google announced their next gen model called Gemini. And in the technical paper published for that, it had a handwritten uh students answer to a question and then had the Gemini model evaluate it and correct it. Like, where did this, where was the student's reasoning sound? Where where did they they mess up? And and to give instruction to the student for how they could have answered the the question better. Um, and just did a did a bang up job on it. Um, and so uh I'm really excited about what twenty twenty four is going to look like for education as we're able to use artificial intelligence to help teachers put together lesson plans as they can help grade things, as students can each get high quality tutors, um which we know is highly efficacious. Uh, and and I think our role as a school district is really to be on the forefront of this technology. We're right in the heart of Silicon Valley and we have students that badly need high quality education. That's going to continue to need awesome human teachers and administration. And I think these students could hugely benefit by having uh high quality AI tutors for them. And our teachers can benefit and our administration can benefit from this technology too. So I'm I I I left with a real sense of optimism that next year is going to be a big year for looking at how we can wield these technologies to 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 help our kids. There was also a panel about uh enticingly uh titled, like, what where are the missing students? Um, and we had a Stanford professor who'd done detailed research and his formal academic answer was, we're not sure.
We have over three hundred thousand students.
Three hundred thousand students across the state of California uh who should be enrolled in public schools and we're not entirely sure where they went. Um, in terms of, is it is it immigration, change in demographics, switch over to uh private school, homeschooling, charter schools? None none of the obvious ones are sufficient to fully explain the gap. Um, so I left that one feeling kind of unsettled that we weren't quite sure where three hundred thousand children were. Um, and a little uncertain about our own prognostications for like, how many students is Redwood City School District going to have in ten years, twenty years, thirty years? If we've got such giant gaps in our understanding of the evolution of these demographics that we just can't even answer basic questions about where students are going and where they're coming from. So um I I don't know if there's more that we can do to work with researchers to better understand, but it's like, it's really critical for our district to know, like, where are are we going to continue shrinking? Are we going to stay the same size, et cetera? Um, so a gripping, ongoing topic, I guess you could say. Um, so yeah, that was um, that was what I got out of AEC. I was very glad I was able to attend and and get better.
Thank you. Cecilia, did you have anything you wanted to share?
So of course, I was there too for the um AEC and of course, um learned a lot. Um, definitely a lot of information, like David said, maybe there would be some time when we can all share, because obviously it was a lot. Um, some of the things that just kind of um empowered me was to hear, obviously, a lot of, you know, we heard from uh CEO uh Billy Burnin, and he talked about um educating students, um what unites us, it's greater than what divides us. And that's actually a really big, you know, just everything you heard from whether it was a speaker or the workshops, um, it's things that at least take me back and make me wonder how else we can help our district um thrive. We are already doing a good thing. Um, one of the things at one of the workshops was to uh whenever we are doing school visits, to actually ask the leadership team, what's keeping you up at night? What can we do to help you? So that's, you know, that was a really good one. Um. Again, there is a lot of uh workshops that I attended, all very great. Um, there was one in particular that I walked out of because I felt it was kind of a waste of my time, because Redwood City, again, like Alyssa mentioned, it's already doing a lot of the things. And so I went to another one and again, just took notes. Uh, lots of great information that at one point, however, we're going to share it. It's, it's just all things that would benefit our district. So um, and then um, attended the Superintendent Advisory Committee on Mathematics. Um, again, thank you, Dr. Baker for and Jorge for putting Michelle Ramon to for uh putting this together and being there um for our parents. Um, and I do want to give a shout out to Alyssa. I know she gave you a shout out, but um, I do want to say that I've always said my hats off to her. She does so much for our district. And we want, I want to make sure that we don't take her for granted. She does a lot, not just getting involved with the Redwood City School Board, but again, delegate assembly, um, you name it, she's there, always advocating for our students. So thank you so much, Alyssa.
Yeah, that's very nice of you, Cecilia.
And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I also was at the Annual Education Conference. Um. As was mentioned, I feel like a lot of times I go to the sessions and it's like, I might get one or two nuggets, but most of it is, we we're already doing that and more. Um, so, you know, awesome to our school district and Dr. Baker. We're ahead of the game in a lot of areas. I did attend the Developing Workforce Housing Session. Um, Mike was there too, which again, we're ahead of the game on that, but I was able to come away with a couple of um links and information that I think we might not have yet. So I was going to send those out to to the board um and Dr. Baker to take a look at. Um. I think both of us, our biggest takeaway was how many people were in the room. What, hundred and hundred and fifty, maybe? Um, up and down the state, there were a lot of people that are in the very beginning talks about, we we know we need to do workforce housing. And how are we going to do it? So it was, it was an interesting session. Um, Alyssa and I also went to the one on the Chat GPT as a tool for teaching and learning um with the Santa Cruz School District. I think it was phenomenal. I think they are ahead of the game in using AI and.
Mention, mention like one of the nuggets that we about the accountability.
Um, right, so the the uh superintendent.
Well, superintendent and the principals, the administrators are using it for accountability reports.
Yeah, they're using it to write reports for like the start and whatnot to save, you know, two hours. They still have to put a lot of work into it and review it and all that. But it can be used and they're starting to explore using it to write IEPs. Um, so that would be interesting to to hear how that goes. Um, and you had a good point, Alyssa, about the IEPs with streamlining the language and whatnot.
Right. Yeah, I.
Getting rid of some of the bias.
Yeah, I think when we get to the uh adding an agenda item, I think it would be good to add one around our artificial intelligence. And there's just like all, like everything that we learned at the conference and what we heard some districts do, you know, would be anyway.
That would be great.
And and I've put the the information that was on that you know, was on the app. So I've already got the contact.
That's awesome. Yeah.
After you.
Because it's moving so quickly, like we could be doing, you know, anyway, there's a lot of opportunity for.
Yeah. Um, I also attended the Word at All the Students Go session, and there was a phenomenal panelist that wasn't mentioned. Um, her name's Alyssa McAvoy.
Thank you.
Um, and she was presented a case study of what our district went through with closing schools. And um, there's a lot of interest from the audience on that.
There were, and there's a lot of school districts who need to make that brave step. And as you know, it's not easy to do.
There were at least three, three sessions specifically about consolidation.
There were so many, I know.
Case at school.
Yeah. So again, I mean, hats off to this district. We've made a lot of hard choices over the years.
And then, David, I wanted to say too, how inspiring Sal Khan was. Um, looking at the conmigo is, I was so excited about that. Um, I want to use it with my own kid at home. I need to figure out if I can, or if that has to have a teacher on the background end of it. But um, you you know, and he mentioned that um looking for districts to pilot it too. So I'll put that out there that I think that would be fantastic for us to do. Yeah, yeah. Um. And that's my report. Thank you.
Great. I think a lot of mine is covered, with the exception of uh Anna and I were at the Spanish Superintendent Advisory Committee Meeting this week. And we were at Taft and Anna did a fantastic job of explaining the new math program with parents and she had them doing tasks. So uh I think that's one thing you're going to have to do with the board. And we'll bring them and so they get a a a sense of what that's like in the classroom now compared to when everything was wrote and you had to memorize everything. So great, great job that was done. Uh, I think on Tuesday, it was on Tuesday morning, we were there. And then um Rick and I met with VP CS. You did more of the meeting than I did, because I was in another meeting and ran in uh towards the end. But um they are coming up with a timeline for us to meet with the Superintendent's uh committee to review the timeline and what will take place in the near future. So that meeting was today, and we hope to have that meeting early January when we come back with them and and the members that, two board members that sit on that committee with myself, you know. Oh, it's that with, it's with the new construction company that's going to work with the VP CS, Van Pelt Construction Services. And so um.
Yeah, I just missed the critical piece of what you were talking about.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, perfect. So so that was a piece. The other piece is that um I'm going to be meeting with some rocket ship parents, the ones that you have the letter. Um, I don't know where that, where we're going with that, but um I I'm I said I'd meet with three of the parents for them to get that group together, narrow it down. And Ellen did a great job of talking and saying, I'll meet with three, so get your three together. Um, I will meet with Janet Mueller prior to that meeting so that um, because there's a process for what they would like us to do. And we can talk about that in our individual meetings. And I already did talk to Cecilia today when we had our meeting uh about what they um are hoping for, but it's a long process. And I just want to get my ducks in a row with Janet Mueller prior to that meeting.
And then that meeting is happening next week on Tuesday.
Correct. I saw it on my calendar.
Okay.
And that's, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. A lot going on in December. Um, okay, item thirteen point one, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund, October twenty twenty three. Any questions?
For Rick.
Hearing none. Uh, fourteen point one correspondence. I don't think we've gotten much.
No, the uh Rick and I did.
Well, we did get the rocket ship letter.
Right. And we did get an email from a parent of the community regarding our director of um CNS, the position that we have flown at this point in time. And um, we hope to interview um mid-January when we come back.
Thank you. Uh, fifteen point one, possible other business suggested items for the future agenda. So we heard.
Yeah, true. Yeah, and again, you know, that doesn't have to happen.
Yeah, I know, right away.
Tomorrow. So just fit it in with everything else.
I really want us to go do the visit, you know, I have to talk to Bronya. I want to talk to Bronya and to Kathy.
You know, our.
Do you want to turn your mic on?
Different places. So part of it would be for us. Oh, part of it would be for us to understand what are we already doing as a district? And then what are some things that we might want to be doing, right, more? So.
And they're go, they're going to be attending the Q conference?
Right, because they're going to come back with all sorts of stuff.
I wonder if there's some of the stuff that's going to touch base. So I believe they're going, I have to go look at the thing, I think they're January or February, so it might be a good time.
Maybe March or something. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Anything else?
Um, I did a theme just at some point, not super high urgency, just uh to get updates from the pedagogical field, like what are we learning about how kids learn? Uh, how is that getting updated? And then, you know, have a chance to discuss, like, how are we applying those those findings in our district? Again, not not urgent, but it feels like an important thing.
Well, there is, there is something coming up. Once we, we, you know, everybody's doing the second round of I ready.
Yeah.
So um, and Jenny Tran has done an amazing job with this um document, I should say, this platform that she put together and she trained the board, not the board, she trained the administrators on Monday. And um, so let us finish, uh finish with the second round of of um testing, get the results, get them into that platform, and then we will be bringing you back quite a bit of information. Yeah, I judge she's amazing with that. I need her for a tutorial. But I have to look for the red, that red X, right? I know.
Remember, she did the other dashboard this past, and she's doing one for attendance.
Yeah.
So it's only the one with I ready, right? Now that we're looking at, but she's created
Yeah.
A number to help us.
Anything else?
I did have a question, considering you are all in your roles, would you like to bring back the committee assignments to discuss? Or do you want to keep those?
Yeah, so in in that bylaw, it does mention going over the committees. We just did them and at the beginning of the week.
Yeah.
I don't feel like we need to. Yeah, Cecilia, do you want to come up down? No. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for being on it. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, changes to the board meeting calendar. Um, is you were to. So we have a placeholder for a board update, yeah.
I'm sorry, real quick, you know, we might want to just look at that bylaws, because I think we we always do our committee assignments, I think, at the beginning of the year, don't we? Is that when we typically look at them? So I think I think our practice may be a little different than what our policy says. Um, although although I guess part of it is if you have it, it's actually when you have a new board member that we need to do it. So.
Year when uh Trisically joined.
Then it is important to do it.
Right.
So when we have a new board member, that's when we do it. Okay, anyway, we may not need to change that, but I'm just saying we could even just take a peek at it, but yeah.
So changes to calendar.
So I was, I I've already, I've only spoken to two board members regarding this, but um January. So the rest of you can, ah, come on calendar.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
It's Friday, January nineteenth.
It's Friday, January nineteenth. If it's possible to have an offsite for about four hours in the morning. I know your schedule's a little.
It could just.
I can work, we can work around that.
But I could probably have Tim take. I'm sure it's a good day.
And it would be about four hours.
I can, and I would prefer. I can, and I would prefer morning because I know we had talked about afternoon briefly, but that's Jude's birthday, so.
But my, my, my job's East Coast hours, so I tend to prefer afternoons. Um, that said, I don't have a hard conflict yet on January nineteenth. Oh, except for ten to ten thirty is hardish conflict.
Ten to ten thirty with that, okay. Cecilia, you're fine.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. If you put that in there, that'd be great.
So from when to when on the?
I'd probably go from eight thirty to one.
Eight thirty to one.
Right. We'll start off with myself and then it'll be the executive cabinet with me after about an hour. So.
Yeah, sorry. It wouldn't save. Well, it is nine thirty one. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I want to say thank you to the audience too, because there's several of you that hung in with us the whole time. Thanks for being here.
Bravo.
Yes. Very good.
Making charge, sorry. Cecilia, I hope you feel better.
Thank you. Have a good one, guys.
All right, thanks.